It's nine o'clock, so I will call this work session to order. All right, where do we want to start?
Okay, so this is work session number two. So basically since the last work session on the sixth, we've taken what we had and split it into two programs, one for operational and one for what I'm calling strategic investment projects. So they each have their own set of documents to go with them. Here's a basic breakdown of the differences. And so I sort of took what was said at the last meeting and said that the operational support will go through more of the traditional full budget committee process like they have in the past, whereas the strategic investment projects will be more of a court decision as projects have been in the past.
So Lisa, when I read that, I went.
So what we did? Well, I mean, I think we can revisit that. I think we had talked specifically about the fall being coming through us because the budget committees
Correct.
will not be.
Does it convene?
Does it convene?
Mm-hmm.
I think there's still an open question about how they want to handle this spring cycle.
Okay.
So.
Okay. And that when it says set the funding cap, is that a total cap or is that a?
That's during the budget process, setting a final budget, approving budget.
That's what you're reminding them.
They've done that, we've spoken about, we've always done that before, but.
And approved budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
By setting it, basically you're going to provide them something and they're going to say they don't need.
Yeah, we'll say we want to put this much in these funds and they'll say, oh, that looks great, or it doesn't.
And then we'll divvy out.
But that doesn't say what you're going to spend.
For specific projects.
Correct, it's not your marketing.
That's our pool of money that we can fund and out of committees.
Okay, so the first question I'm asking you guys is, we talked about having sort of basically setting a cutoff to where we're not taking new operational support grant requests. And we talked about having existing applicants grandfathered in. And so my question is, how do you want to do that? What's the cutoff? So the two sort of things I kind of threw up there were basically option one. Say if you received it in fiscal year 2018, 19, in the current year, then you grandfathered in. The other option I threw out there is because not everyone has been allowed the opportunity to ask for money, do we want to have an open cycle where other entities have a one-time chance to get themselves into it? Or some other way of doing it?
So is there, just looking back over several years, is there entities that did not for some reason because they were doing okay and they did not need any funding last year that have done it though in previous years? That would be excluded if we went with option one?
I don't know. I would guess not in recent years.
I don't think the last three or four budget cycles.
I do wonder.
They've been all consistent.
Did anybody that maybe is using special projects though?
Well, those change everything.
I know, but I was, I'm wondering if people have previously maybe used special projects as a way to boost their operational and not actually asked us for operational grants?
And I think that absolutely has happened.
And I think the Chamber of Commerce, to be example, that they've generally asked for special projects, one of your money cultural coalition.
China Golf, City of Arlington's another one.
Sure. Swimming pool, City of Condon.
So based on that, I'm wondering if maybe this is just the one-year open cycle and then going forward the next year, it's going to be only within those pool of candidates that have previously asked for it. Because they want to avoid adding a ton of people asking, like inviting people to ask us to help support operational expenses if, I mean, because the whole point of this is to try to get folks standing on their own two feet over time. So I think we want to be careful about just come one, come all, let us fund your organization. Because that's not sustainable, but if there are entities that, for instance, were asking for grants under other funding sources and we're going to be probably curtailing those somewhat, then this sort of might be the good middle compromise.
We don't want to cut them off totally at the pockets and then say, we can't function now because you have taken away from us.
What do you think about that, Leslie?
Yeah, that sounds better.
Okay, so it sounds like we're going with option two, the one-year open cycle. And then moving forward in 2021, then it would be just those entities that have already received operational funds previously.
Received or applied previously. So if they applied, but for whatever reason didn't get their funding this year, and then apply again the next year, would they still be eligible to apply the next year?
I would say received. I think if they've operated without us, which would indicate that they have, if they didn't receive something and they're still in business. I just don't want to cut people off if they are used to it. Did you have a question?
I do, I have a question. What if we get a new organization in the community? And let's say in 2022 and they're needing funding and it's a great project, it fits in with your guys' mission?
I mean, I would say if they can't stand on their own two feet, they're not going to be able to survive. I mean, because again, we're looking at this from a vantage point of the funds that we're using to support operational expenses have a sunset on them.
Okay.
So what we don't want is to be propping up things that cannot, are not, don't have a path to sustainability long-term. Because what will end up happening is when the funds go away on that next year, we'll have 10 people come in and say, hey, we have to shut our doors if you don't support us. And we won't have the money to distribute at that point. So I think that's, I think there may be an opportunity for us to look at how we can support new organizations maybe differently, but in terms of providing operational support, there's just a reality that there's a limit, at least how it is right now. I mean, if we end up having tons of new wind projects come in and it turns, then we can always revisit that down the road. But I think we have to operate what we have right now. The reality we have right now is that the funds go away in about five years, so.
Okay, so then how do you want to handle publicizing this grant offering? From two sides, one, I think especially if we're going to be asking some of the special projects folks to come into this cycle instead. And then just all these changes, I do really want to suggest that we do some sort of outreach where we're actually going out and holding some, some sort of meetings, some sort of trainings on this new process so that all these entities know what the expectations are?
I mean, I, I think I would approach it maybe two ways. One is probably sending some sort of written communication that, hey, if you've received, and that could be, that's operational and special projects folks. Hey, in the past, you've received funding in essence from Gillum County. We wanted to let you know that there's some upcoming changes to this year's cycle. And here, and kind of giving an outline of where that is, what the deadlines are and what our expectations for each of those funds are. That would sort of be for me step one. And then step two is maybe divvying it up and us each taking meetings to go to, basically. And allowing people, once those letters sort of arrive, to say, here's, here's how we're handling this. And that way, there's can be questions, I'm sure boards are going to have lots of questions about what it would look like. So that, I mean, that, I think it's kind of got to be a two-step process.
Do we want to put this in the paper on the website that?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Well, I'd say, because in the past, there's sort of been this list of folks who have been coming year after year that are sent specific invites to send in this year's application. It hasn't been opened to anybody.
I think it should just be open. Because if there are some outliers out there that don't receive an invite, you know, if we're, if it's open, let's make it truly open. And.
Liz, you also have the county newsletter that could be utilized that goes to every mailbox.
That's a good one, too, yeah.
Okay, and then my last question was, so like last year, the Arlington School District, instead of asking for operational funds, asked for project funds, basically, to repair the roof. If they do something like that again this year, does that throw them out of contention for operational support? Or?
Yes.
Okay, so they have to.
I mean, to me, if they're, if they.
But not for, but not for a fall.
But not for, not for projects.
Not for projects.
No, but if you don't apply for operational funds this year, if they don't go through and see what they've got and understand that they're using money, they're using special project money for operational and they're going to need operational and don't apply for it this year, then to me, it closes. This year it closes because we're trying to get those people to stop using our money for operations. So if we educate them that that's how we see it, then, yeah. 2019, 2020 is, that's it. If you didn't ask for operational funds, then you're out.
The thing with the schools, though, is they have some flexibility, right? So if they're in need of some building maintenance or an upgrade to, they can submit a project request to cover that facility need under projects, which internally in their budget will free up things for operational that they would have otherwise had to spend. So if they have a boiler that breaks or something and they're coming to us, asking us to fund that, normally that would have come out of their operational. So it's not that we're necessarily going to.
They know they have to protect their own.
Supporting their budget, their operational budget. It's just we would be, they would need to get creative in asking us to fund projects if they don't request operational in this first year.
So the, so like for Condon, for the last few years, it's just been operational, hasn't it, for the school district?
I believe so, yes.
So another thing I'm hearing now that I didn't quite understand when I was reading through the information is, and but it was a question that I did have on here. So special projects, we are not, we are making that completely non-operational funding. So if people in the past have used special projects grants for operational funding, we are now going to say, you have to apply for this other grant during the budget process.
Because I would say, I mean, if you look in the ordinance for special projects grant, I mean, it, it seems that the people who came before us intended, well, the name kind of tips it off, special projects was not intended to be ongoing operational support. And it was, and if you read in the ordinance, it's also meant to be a match, so.
And not for operating.
And not for operating. So it's been, it's been allowed by previous courts, but if we were to just follow what's in the ordinance itself, it really shouldn't be operational, which is why I think it's important that we open up the operational cycle.
Creston's a set there for us, so you've got to give them a chance to adjust.
Yeah. Just move over to the director.
That makes sense, what else do you need from this?
All right, so the next question is, what can operational support funds be used for? And just a hint, the next question's going to be, what can they not be used for?
I have a quick question really quick. To go back on the operational is, I see some organizations that are fine right now and we know they hit a rough spot. And granted, in five years, we know this money is cycling out anyway, but if it was like in the next two years? What I'd hate to see is an organization, and I'm just going to pick on the school. The school come in this year and say, you know, we want 300,000, we don't really need it, but we think enrollment's going down in four years and we're going to need it then. How do you guys anticipate doing that? I mean, is that a, is this a one-time use or lose or? I don't, what I don't want to see is an organization come in and they don't really need the money now, but in two years, they really, really need the money. And I think we all know of one or two organizations that could be in that spot. And I think some of them are in that spot now, so it fits into the cycle. But I also, I just don't want them to ask for money if they don't need it.
Yeah, and I see what you're saying.
And ask for the money if they really need it.
I have, I have been worried a little bit, I'm just saying, if you don't do it this year, you're out.
And I see where, I see where you need to put the parameters on there. I'm just, but I guess if, if the money's gone, you need to let them know the money's gone. But I just foresee that as people coming in saying, we have to ask this year or we're completely out.
We had a discussion in the last meeting about building reserves and that's exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah.
And we're not encouraging.
See, and that's what I think some of the organizations have used the money for in the past.
I think you're correct, but.
Is building reserves instead of really needing the money. And is there a time that that's going to change? And maybe it's something that you'll have to take up in three years if one comes in that is in a world of hurt. But you would hope that they're planning for that now.
Yeah, it's the challenge, right? It's like how to structure this so that we're not encouraging reliance on a fund that's not going to be in existence over, you know, after a period of time. And I don't know what the answer is, but it, it feels like we need to set some kind of, that there needs to be sort of a cultural shift in terms of people believing that anytime they're in trouble, that the county's going to be able to provide support. Because it just, I do worry, sitting in some of the board meetings, of folks who have taken money from us and mentioning that these funds that they've relied on for years now have sunset and the looks on their faces indicates to me that they have no clue that that's coming. And they haven't really thought how they're going to operate after it dries up. So it's like, how do we get them cognizant that this is a short-term, limited support that? And so it may just be that we keep that in mind and.
Well, and hopefully if they come in and ask, so I'm picking on the schools again. If the county has paid for their college funds, their college classes. And so if they only come in for that and maybe in three years down the road, they're saying, wait, we have a bigger need. Whether the money will be there or not, I don't know. But that might be something, too. But no, I mean, maybe part of the education part needs to also be is maybe helping some of these boards that are a lot of laypeople, which all of us are laypeople on these boards, educating them in strategic planning also. I don't know if there's a way, when you guys are doing your strategic planning, if you say, look, if there's some sort of program, spending your money to help these people know how to plan for the future might be worth the investment.
Maybe an interesting idea, actually.
That's kind of why I'm sitting.
We need to give them tools to be able to.
Rather than one budget cycle, two. Because we're, I mean, within the next couple of months, everybody's going to be in their budget. So there's not enough time for them to do long-term planning between now and next month or April, whenever they do their budget. And then to learn the new system and how the court's going or everything, if, if it wasn't stretched out to 2021 with a smaller window or something like that, I mean, just for another opportunity for those. Because we know how government works, it's rather slow getting everybody to come to a long-term plan. It might take them a full year to develop that plan.
But isn't that what we, I thought that's what we were doing, was that we're, we're saying, these are our parameters. And next year, when you come and ask for money, then you need to bring us. We're not asking them to bring the five-year plan this.
This year.
This time. That's for, that's for next year.
We're asking for it for next year, that was my understanding. No.
Yeah, we, we don't have that expectation that they're going to be able to do that right in two months.
But they're going to know it this year.
They're going to know they're going to have to have it in order to request funds again next year. And we do need to give them tools to know how to do that. We can't just say, you, we want this from you, you figure it out. We really do need to be a part of that.
Maybe that's a part of the grant, of receiving the grant, is if you're going to get the money, you need to come to the strategic planning session. Because you guys need to know that this is kind of the plan that we require. And that's just one of the stipulations. If you want the money, you got to come to the planning session to figure out how to move forward. Because I think a lot of us don't know how to do this.
No, no, they don't have the tools to do it, no.
Yeah. Thanks.
So is that, so is this what Catherine brings up and I was thinking about two, is that going to cause us problems with our option two? Are we going to have people that don't necessarily need money this year, but now they're going to think, oh, we have to ask for something or we're going to be excluded from future years?
So what about, what about not explicitly limiting those organizations? But in 2021, those sustainability plans are a requirement upfront. So you're, so if there's an emergency, somebody really has, something goes south for, that we have some flexibility. The idea is that we're not just lending into something that's going to be unsustainable long-term. I mean, I don't know if, if it's important that we give ourselves that flexibility or not.
I think it is. And I'm, I'm worried about having it be too stringent that we don't have any leeway to.
But then they're, but then they're coming to us and asking us for reserve, which we don't want them to do.
Well, I'm okay with the reserve part. I'm okay with the reserve part. It's just, it's just, some of the, some of the things that we're thinking about putting in here, I feel, might be a little too rigid. I want to give us a little leeway. I like the ideas of having, these are, these are our guidelines, these are what we want you to do. But some of the language, if it's very, like, instead of saying, you know, the funds should be expended all in the same fiscal year, I like the way that sounds better than the funds must be expended during the same fiscal year. There are things that I saw throughout that, you know, just the wording can make it like, this is what we want to happen, this is the recommendation. But it gives us a little more flexibility if, if, you know, they're doing a construction project and it doesn't get tied up by June 30th. You know, and they do go into July because of how.
But that's not operational, that's special projects, a construction project.
Correct, but that was just an example. I'm just saying that language, the language in here, I just want to be careful that we're not too, that we're not imposing too many restrictions on us that we can't, that we don't have any flexibility.
We can always add in something that says, if you're going to go over, you know, the end of the year, you need to let us know or you need to make a request to do that.
And that would, and that would help with that.
But I do think that we need to have language that has some teeth, otherwise.
I agree, I mean, I think this is the issue we had with our loan program before was the guidelines, if you read through them and had all these teeth, and all of a sudden you get to number nine and it says, well, we can basically do whatever we want. Well, why do we have the first eight points then? Because number nine, just forget it, we don't have to follow the rules, so. I mean, there's still.
It's just conservative.
I mean, the other side of it is, is there's still, I mean, if somebody came in with an emergency or something, there's still other funds available. We aren't completely tying our hands, I don't feel. And right, the end of the year thing's always an issue with every, you know, you and I both know that, it's always an issue. And I think they just need to report it. I think, you know, there still has to be a level of understanding that, hey, things don't work out perfectly. And, I mean, it's, it's like the strategic plans, we all know that, you know, projecting something five years in a country just really isn't. It's good to have a plan, but it's not really possible, so.
Okay.
But I think one thing that might ease Leslie's mind a little bit is that the guidelines could be maybe just slightly looser, adding some maze or should, but then it's mentioned that we'll actually do contracts for each grant. And within those contracts, you could say, okay, this one is you will, you shall.
Yeah, I mean, because the.
So the guidelines are a little looser for you, but the contracts can be tighter?
Yeah. I think that's a good way of addressing it. Because then that way, I mean, these are general guidelines, but there's going to be some times when maybe there does seem to be just a little bit more flexibility and the contract can capture that. I think that's a good.
Okay, that sounds good.
Ground to set, more for you, Sharon? Okay, so to make sure, we're still okay with going forward with option two?
I, I have another question about that, too, I guess. So in option two, if, say, we'll keep talking about the school as an example. If, say, did we say that you have to receive funding or you can just apply to be eligible the following years? So if we, so if we deny a, something this year for the school, because we don't think they need the money or whatever, then they're out?
Well, we're going to do a ranking system, so we talked about last time. They can just be, their project for this year could be at the bottom of the ranks.
Right.
They get knocked out.
So if they get knocked out, are they?
Evidently they're ineligible according to this.
Well, and so there's another way to do this, which is that you rank everybody out. You give everybody a fund or a do not fund listing. And so you can still have, so say the schools come in and they get ranked low, but they're still ranked as a fund if funding is available. But you go down the list, you run out of money before you get to them, they're still marked as fundable. They just didn't get money.
So they weren't ineligible?
So then the next year, they will still be marked as fundable?
Okay.
So that.
That's about, yeah.
Yeah, that helps.
What, so what happens the next year? So in 2020, 2021, what happens when we go through the cycle again? I mean, you've eliminated some people that were fundable. So the next time, is the same thing happen again? I mean, is the list keep getting shorter, is it get less fundable?
I think over time, the list should get shorter.
I mean, that's the goal, right? Should make it sustainable.
And the amount given out every year should go down, but.
The amount goes down.
But you might have.
You might have.
The money, the pool of money goes down.
Right, like in that example, you know, this year, maybe there wasn't enough money to get down to this organization, but they were still marked as fundable. Well, next year, because some people have been cut out or reduced their ask, now there is enough money to get to that organization.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I mean, that's how I thought it would work, but I'm going to make it clear.
Well, and they may be higher in the need. They may raise up in the, in the whole cycle because they, they're in more need than they were.
They are more hurt this year.
Yeah.
Okay, are we good?
Okay.
It's a whole new world, guys.
All right, what can it be used for?
In this pot.
So I'm going to throw this out and the addition here is for strategic planning projects.
Yeah. I think that's appropriate. Anything else?
Set says everything.
Can you say anything?
Yes. I'm trying to find out where I'm at in my notes. It's, it's, I'm not printing things, I'm trying to do things just off of my computer. But when we're working on something like this, it would have been really handy for me to be able to do that. So instead, I'm writing notes and I'm not sure if I'm going to miss, you know, we may have to circle back.
We can always go back, yeah.
But I may need to, we may need to try to figure out how to get packets to Arlington.
I'm just going to print my own.
You're going to print your own.
I don't, I got paper and I'm going to hide it from my printer and put it on my expensive.
What day is your work? Do you work Friday or just Thursday?
I, I work Monday through Thursday.
Monday through Thursday. But the packets are usually ready by end of Thursday, aren't they? Okay, we'll have to talk.
All right, ma'am.
Then I will have them on the weekend.
Relax.
There is no such thing.
Because I, like, right now, right now.
Let's ask to go to Portland and then back to Arlington.
You don't write stuff.
Deputies don't mind delivering stuff either. We usually have somebody.
Okay.
Okay.
Operational support cannot be used for building capital reserves. Operational support cannot be used for building capital reserves.
I think what needs to be added to that is your reserves for your pension expenses. Because hers has gotten to be an issue of...
And the schools, especially.
Not just the schools, what I'm thinking too, is other pensions of... Well, maybe it doesn't apply. I'm thinking of other cities have to, to put aside money for pension requirements.
So pension reserves?
I don't know, I don't, I don't feel about that. But I do know that some of them are putting aside pensions.
Some huge amounts of them. So the others...
Isn't that a direct benefit with the previous page, though, where it says employee salaries and benefits?
Not, not with some of the organizations.
I guess you're talking, you're talking a reserve for the benefits instead of a...
Some organizations offer early retirement. And I think some of these funds have gone in to make sure the early retirement is funded.
Funding early retirement.
But that's still a benefit, early retirement is.
But do you...
I'm, I'm just picking, I'm just picking, but you...
You're just picking on me.
Yeah, but you see my point, I mean...
No, I see it as, I see it as a payroll expense, except for they're using it as a reserve line item. I mean, like, our purse expense and the county's purse expense, we don't have early retirement. And so ours is just a payroll expense.
Right.
Again, picking on the schools, they do have early retirement and they're putting aside money to make sure they can pay those obligations, which are above and beyond perks.
Right.
But you're right, it could be, you know, hey, this is a payroll expense, but...
That idea, maybe that the county would prefer to fund the actual teacher in the room rather than an unfunded pension obligation.
The other one I was gonna ask about on this is pass-through funds. So some of the organizations that we give money to turn around and give money to other people. Is that something that we wanna put...
Treasurers does not like those.
I was just gonna say, is that an operational expense?
Or that covers...
That's what I'm asking.
No.
Well, there are, I think there's gonna be some that we run across that might be, depending on how you interpret them. Are they, is it a project or is it just operating costs? There's a few of them that I thought, hmm, I wonder where that falls in.
If the port has grant money in their operational expense, is that what you're, is that the sort of thing you're talking about?
So the port, the port gets project money, they don't get operational money.
Right.
But say, I don't think who's on the list. Say, an OSU extension gives out, gets $104,000 from us, and then they turn around and give out a scholarship to go to 4H camp or something. Is that kind of pass-through? And maybe that's a bad example, too.
Yeah.
I mean, the county's...
Yeah, because that, to me, that's, yeah, that's, that's the thing we want them to fund.
We participate in a direct pass-through.
No, it isn't, you're right.
So I don't know, I don't know about any other, maybe the city does too. But so the state specifically gives us money and they say, hey, this goes to these guys. So all, I take the money in and I send an AP memo to the clerk and she pays it right back out at the same value. So there's no, I mean, it's just a hassle, basically. So that's what I think of, you say pass-through, but I don't, can't really envision what... I don't know, I don't know enough about anybody else's finances to know if they do something like that.
Well, the chamber offers a $500 scholarship, but those funds could come out of our, our membership drive.
Or a special project, a funding project that, yeah. As opposed to...
I mean, you don't need to address it.
Yeah, because when they, aren't we gonna look at their budgets, too? When, I mean, because we're asking this year for them to...
Funds are gonna be used for.
Yeah, we're asking them to give us a budget so we can tell. And so if their operational budget says, we're giving this other organization $500 of the money that you're giving us, and we're saying, no, we're not gonna fund that because they need to come in and say, we need $500 for this project or this...
Did you have specific things in mind when you were, like...
I didn't, I just know that, you know, sometimes the people that we grant money to also grant money out themselves. I didn't know if we wanted to be clear that that's not what this is for. This is for your operations, not for you to spread around to other things.
Well, I know that the port, there's $10,000 grants.
But not out of their operation budget?
I don't know what they give out, but that's the only thing I can think of.
So I think this might be overcomplicated. Because I think what you just wanna have is what it can be used for and not address this. Maybe that's, would simplify it. Hey, the only thing you can use this for is payroll and expenses.
Right.
Instead of not, not putting a knock in here at all.
Yeah, but I don't know, maybe, maybe that's not, but I'm thinking, boy, you could...
That list could go on and on.
Yeah, if you, because then when, when you did put supplies in on the other ones, materials and supplies, that's where you need to have the knock. So maybe, maybe even that, maybe it just needs to be for, for staff, I don't...
I, I like what you're, I like that idea. I say, this is what it's for.
But then again, you know, you have to buy oil and you have to buy, you know, soap.
Well, and then the budget that we see clarifies where the money's going.
I'm okay with just leaving it as, I think it's important to still say that this isn't meant to be something to build reserves for other entities. And I think it's okay to spec, to specify that the capital improvements and equipment purchases is not what we're talking about. Because I think the, the next part of that phrase needs to be, in essence, that's what the project requests are for. I mean, so it's not that we're not funding those, it's just this isn't the right pot for that, those requests.
That's what I'm out of.
Well, this list does not have to be all inclusive. It could just be, these are a couple of big things that we're just telling you.
All right.
When we look at your budget, we'll determine that.
Okay.
Let's keep it simple.
All right. So then, just general guidelines, as I kind of threw together based on the conversation at the last meeting. County is a funding source of last resort. Match funding is expected. And my follow-up question on this is gonna be, do you guys wanna set a minimum percentage? That the county reserves the right to reduce your award amounts from whatever you requested based on any number of reasons that might come up? That you will have to have a sustainability plan in coming years, but start thinking about it now? And then, coming back to the funds, need to be claimed or expended in the fiscal year for which they were awarded.
So does this, does our application process, these guidelines eliminate that issue where they, well, this is very...
Operational support.
That's a special project. That's a project. Special projects question.
I'll hold that one for that project.
Okay.
I know, it's so hard not to think about that stuff.
So, I mean, I'm okay with these. I think the claimed gets to your point, Leslie, about having a little bit of flexibility towards the end of the year. Because as long as they've claimed them, you know, they can expend it after they need to. But I do question, I mean, if you're asking for operational support, you would think that that would be a pretty pressing thing, that you would actually need it within the year that you're asking. Otherwise, why are you asking for it? So...
Unless you're thinking about needing more next year, and so you're trying to pad your pocket.
Well, and a big part of that is that we need to spend our funds within our budget year, our budget funds in the budget year that they were appropriated. If we go over, then we start having all kinds of problems. We can't wait till the next fiscal year.
So on our end, we need to have those funds released.
Right.
Yeah, to make it clean. It seems reasonable to say, here, let us give you your money within the year that you requested it.
And right now, we're still sitting on almost $700,000 in grants that were awarded last spring that haven't been claimed yet for operational purposes.
That's a lot of money.
Yes.
So...
So do we wanna set a match? That seems to be the only kind of clue.
Yes, yes, we do need to, to be specific about that. Because you can't just say magic funds and then say, okay, they're matched at $10,000.
Rob, did you have a question?
Yeah, can I ask a question before we move to the next match funding piece? Going back to unexpended funds during a particular year. We're talking about the operational grant funds, correct? Not funds that were granted to the...
Operational...
You know?
Yeah, we're specifically working on operational.
Okay.
Yeah, just operational.
Yeah.
We'll get to the projects next.
But those funds really should be claimed before the end of the fiscal year as well. Otherwise, budget ends and they haven't been claimed and we're into a new budget. If that makes sense?
Sure, makes sense to me. If you don't mind, I can just go into our bank account.
Well, that's one of the unfortunate side effects here. You guys get the interest, it's a fast.
So when I was reading this, like I said, I'm a little bit lost because my notes are not really following this very well. But, you know, I had a note that said about, talking about expending it within the fiscal year. And there was language that said, you know, should be, it should be expended during the fiscal year. Yeah, now, I like that. Because other places later on, I saw that the language was, was a little bit stricter. But anyway, I have a thing that says, page two, it says, operations which request entire cost of program will not be considered. Where did that, where did I see that?
Oh, that's right here. I have that underlined, too. And I said, maybe we should put may in there because that seemed a little harsh.
But we just said that we're gonna require match.
But yeah, that's, that was just my note that I had.
Do any of, I guess my question is, how many of them do that now? The entire cost of program is...
I think for operational support, none of them, well, USDA Wildlife Services, if you put it that way.
Well, they get funding from other counties, though, right?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, yeah.
Well, and they can get some stuff to...
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't think it's gonna be a hindrance to any of our current applicants. The question would be, is if we set a minimum match percentage, I don't know where that gets set, it might...
Right, what are, what are you thinking about this minimum match?
Well, I mean, here's the thing. We could not set it, but prioritize based on folks who are most likely to be able to stand on their own two feet long term.
They'll score higher in merit.
That they'll score higher in the merit if, if they can show that they've got additional streams of revenue coming in. It's kind of counterintuitive because the ones that rely on us the most are the ones who need us the most. But they're also the ones that are most vulnerable when the money goes away, long term.
Consider it a real loan number, something, 10% or 25% or...
I don't know, do you have any, can we get an arbitrary amount or do you just wanna... Set one?
Well, it would stop people from just coming in and expecting us to fund the entire, their entire organization or project. So I think there's some value in setting an expectation that... It's one thing to say we're the funding source of last resort. It's like, people will send that as they will. But if you require that they are bringing some other money to the table, then that actually really does send that we're, we are the funding last resort, that we expect you to come to the table with other resources, too.
Don't pay them. And if they have, and if they have none, are they just out?
I would say that would make them incredibly vulnerable to when the SIP funds go away and that we are, in essence, propping up something that is not gonna be in existence after the SIP funds go away. I, I mean, it's, this is, these are hard kinds of things for us to have to say in public, but it's just a reality of, we don't have money coming in, we can't distribute it. And there will come a point when we're not going to have the, the cash flow that we have.
That's what I'm...
So...
What percentage do you think?
I mean, I'm okay with setting a minimal one and just when the staff is reviewing, really prioritizing the ones that are coming in.
Nothing else that might, it might help them think about what percentage it is.
Yeah.
And, and it can change from year to year, you know, as we would, as we continue to develop the program, find a better number.
Or like, find the down, or number was...
Or as we move forward, become more restrictive and say, okay, this year it's 15%, next year it's 25%.
Yeah, okay.
So just a question.
Where do you wanna start? Where do you wanna start? Sheri, what do you think?
I'm thinking 10% to 15%. Okay, I don't wanna totally, I want them to start working that.
Okay.
Those sources.
Okay, 10% or 15%? Which one do you guys prefer?
10%.
Leslie wants to let him ease into it.
But, you know, you guys can...
Well, they need to start learning that process of having to go out and get money from somewhere else. I know, I know a lot of them do, but as you say, there are some that don't.
It's the first year.
We don't want to have total...
And two, they're literally gonna have a couple of weeks to make this work. So I think 10% is probably okay to start with and then we'll revise.
Yeah, and, and like Sandy said, we can, we're gonna, we're actually gonna need to do that. Because as our funds become less and less, they need to become more and more self...
Right, and I think when we talk about the projects, maybe that's a place for a higher percentage.
I agree.
Okay.
So is there anything else that I failed to capture that you guys felt were important, general guidelines that you wanted to highlight?
I think we're good, looks good.
Okay. Okay, so circle back to the budget process, budget committee, who's gonna make what decisions?
This is a big one.
Yeah, so the, the first option is basically kind of what I would call the status quo. Sort of how it works now with the addition of the grant or the staff report. But otherwise, we go through the budget process, we have the requests, the full budget committee, which for the crowd is the three court members and three appointed laypeople would make the decisions as part of the budget process. Put that forward as the approved budget. The other option would be to have the role of the budget committee being just setting a certain amount and then letting the court actually make the decisions on individual projects. Or if, not projects, excuse me, programs.
Programs.
I mean, for me, the pro, okay, let's just do pros and cons. To me, the pros of option one is that it allows members of the public to be weighing in on priorities for funding. I think that's historically why we have that budget committee role. I think in terms of how we work together as the budget committee, that there's some benefits, I think, to having those folks weigh in as we're making those big. Because these are pretty big funding decisions. I mean, there's significant investments that the county is making. And so that would, to me, that's the pro of option one. The pro of option two is more, for me, more of a timing issue in that if, if we make those decisions, we can make them a little bit later in. So in essence, the budget can be passed, approved, and then we can go back in after the fact to actually make the grant awards. So there's a timing, to me, the timing is better on option two, but I like the public engagement on option one. So I don't, I don't necessarily have a definite preference between the two, but that's what I see as the pros for each one.
I'm glad that we're, I'm glad that this is up here and that we're discussing this because this was a big issue that I, that I wanted to make sure that we at least discussed. But I, you know, I, I've gotten used to the option one.
It says budget officer, any option ones. I mean, the budget committee likes being engaged, the lay, you know, the lay members do like being engaged in the process. They don't, I mean, basically by approving the budget, they already do option two anyway. So, I mean, it's... So, I mean, it's kind of built into the process, so. And, and the other thing, I, I think maybe the we haven't necessarily always expended all the money that's been put in that line item. So there may still be, I don't know, I mean, that's something else that's kind of different because we've awarded, awarded funds out there kind of throughout the year and that's something we're talking about curtailing somewhat, so.
But if there is, but if there is still funds available in that line item, it is possible.
It is possible, it must be limited.
I don't think we want to go down that.
Oh.
See, to me, the more we talk about it, the more option one seems appealing in part because I think that comes down on the number of people who come back to us leader. If we make this a budget committee decision, then once the budget committee makes the decision, that's the decision.
Yeah.
And there's not a further appeal to the court down the road. Which if the whole point of this is to help streamline this so it's not taking up exorbitant amounts of court time at other parts during the year, then I think it makes sense to keep it as option one and have the budget committee engaged in those decisions.
Now, this is just, we're still just talking about the operational grants, special projects grants, we're going to handle differently.
Possibly.
Possibly. Okay. Yeah, option one, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, for sure. Okay. Awesome. What's next?
All right. So then the review process, so basically what we laid out is that applications will come in, they'll get a preliminary review by staff where they'll be checked for eligibility. Make sure that they're an eligible entity and that their request is eligible for the funding pool they put themselves into. Then the eligible applications will go into the initial staff merit review, which will be the recommendation to the budget committee, staff report. And then the budget committee will review it, using the staff report and merit criteria, make a final funding decision, and then adopt that final decision in the budget. I guess approve the budget that will be adopted later.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah.
So that's the process.
And capturing too, I mean, we sort of captured, but I think we had decided during the last meeting that we're going to forego the everybody coming before the budget committee. That it would just be a, the staff does the research and it's the staff.
The application's more, a little more formalized than previous, so it'll be easier to compare one to the other.
Once the other.
I don't, I don't, I'm not sure it'll be as, as necessary as it was before because there were questions, not all the information.
Within that?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Okay, and then who's going to do that staff report? So what I've sort of thrown out here is the budget officer, the court administrator, and the community development coordinator. So it can be any group that you guys see fit. We're just going to take those, collect the initial applications and administer it.
So I, this is, my vision of this for all of these programs is that there's a one-stop shop. That if there's an organization that has an idea, needs support in some way, that there's one person in the courthouse, or one office in the courthouse, rather, that you get your application from, you know what the different funding streams that, and, and my recommendation is going to be the treasurer's office. Because of Nathan's role in the budget, because I think people tend to go to your office anyway for
Yeah, they love us.
Financial related, Nathan doesn't love you. You know, but.
No, I think, and we talked about this a little bit last meeting and I, you know, again, I have talked about it, I think, you know, from our viewpoint, that works best. I don't know about the, I mean, we talked about sorting the applications in order and all this the last meeting too. We'd be willing to do the preliminary work on that, but ultimately, it's the court's program. So probably the court administrator and the court ought to do the final, hey, this looks like they're in the right order. It looks like.
Yeah, when was it we were talking about having a small group?
So you think the idea would be that it sort of, it would come into the treasurer's office? And then there would be a group that actually goes, and so Kelly would make the initial, like, oh, this didn't come in on time? Uh, or this information isn't complete, you know, just the basic.
And I kind of formulated in my mind, just taking the day and picking maybe a couple of elected officials and going someplace, lock ourselves in a room and just sort through them and just hammer it out. I haven't approached those people because I wasn't told I was in charge of this, but I have been thinking about it.
That's good, you like that, you're thinking about it.
But, but I think, I mean, I, you know, and it just, it just get a couple of different viewpoints and, I mean, where, is, the reason I picked elected officials, they are representatives of people and they're directly elected by the people. So hopefully, hopefully they're the people's best interest in mind. And, you know, they're the, the people that ultimately can pay the price if they make decisions people don't like. But that's, you know, that's part of it, right? So, whereas a lot of the other employees are a little more protected and, you know, I don't know, maybe they'd be fine too.
I, I worry a little bit about using just elected officials because like I said, this is the court's program. And it's a lot of authority and responsibility being handed off.
Well, but they can reorganize them however they see fit. It was part of it.
This is just a recommendation.
This is a recommendation, yeah.
So. I'm thinking that. I'm thinking I might need another minute, actually. What do you guys think? Or do you need a minute too?
Well, no.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Sherry.
I think it needs to be more than that. I don't think that's enough. To really keep around.
So could there be, say? So the thing that I, my goal, the thing that I would like to avoid is picking people that, and this could be the majority. So what, so my concern is that if somebody doesn't like something that a staff member that I supervise, their ranking. I could very easily see them coming to me to appeal that decision. So I would just like to see this shaped in a way, not necessarily that people that we oversee aren't part of it, but that the balance is right so that people are not attempting to have me intercede because they feel like the staff didn't consider this point or whatever. That I, I would like to try to keep us out of the initial review. So I just want to be careful about selecting people so that they're not coming to me asking to, you know, because I, I can see that happening if people are upset, they feel that the staff didn't score them highly enough in this or that, that they will, they will ask us to overrule on the staff recommendation. So, I think maybe, I think maybe that speaks to maybe having some public officials involved because I, I don't get to overrule you. So that actually gives me a little bit more, if the mix is right, that means that it can be a little bit more independent, I think.
Well, I was, you know, it needs to be three or, you know, you're trying to get a consensus, so it's not just me sitting down saying, oh, well, these are the guys here.
Yes, definitely.
We're trying to, we're trying to get a, because I don't know anything, I don't know anything about the programs, right? I don't, you know, I, of course, I have my own personal opinions about some of them, which, you know, I should try to leave out of this process, but get biases. So yeah, the goal is to have a, a group come together and try to limit that in length.
So I would think, based on that, definitely the budget officer. Should we look at having a second elected official?
So when you say budget officer, do you mean treasurer?
Treasurer is.
Is the budget officer.
Doesn't have to be.
It doesn't have to be, but in our case, I have.
But there's a difference.
In this case.
One's elected, one's appointed.
In this case, yes. That it would be Nathan.
They've never appointed anybody else, has there?
He's tried.
I did, I tried. Long with tax.
So it doesn't necessarily need to say budget officer, it's say treasurer.
Okay, that's one good one.
Who else do you guys want? Do you think it's worthwhile to have another elected official?
Yeah, I think so, definitely. But I think we have to hold an elected official and see if he's interested.
Yeah, and I wouldn't necessarily want to say it always has to be the clerk or whatever, that it just needs to be one other elected official, not on the county court.
Right.
Yeah, they can't, yeah, that's the other thing.
Because there's a lot of elected officials that might be interested in the process and, oh, you know.
Can I throw one thing out there? What about one of the laypeople on the budget committee? Just in case, kind of checks and balances, just in case there is maybe something that needs to be brought before the budget committee, or there is some kind of a conflict? But that, at least somebody on the budget committee can bring that forward?
But then you're putting somebody off the budget committee in that position that's then going to approve it later.
Yeah, I get that.
You're going to get to see it, yeah, eventually, they're going to see it.
How many people do we think?
I suggest the county chair.
Sherry just suggested you, Carrie.
I think any of the elected officials would be.
Happy to serve.
How many people are we shooting for?
I mean, my idea is three.
You think three is enough?
Because that way you've got, you know, it's hard to get ties.
That's true.
And I think three, you usually get a pretty diverse opinion.
So why don't we do, what would you guys think about doing the treasurer, a second elected official, and then the court administrator? And that would represent in essence the court's view, but it's not, it's one vote. So if the two electeds are in agreement, then that's the ranking. So we'll have less of people trying to get us to overrule staff.
True.
If that.
Zap, that sounds good?
Does that sound good?
Okay.
You like that?
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
Whatever makes you happy, table's mine.
Oh, I know.
Okay, what's next?
So then, this is sort of the, the merit review criteria that we talked about. So you've got the benefit to the county, which you guys wanted to be the majority of the score, the value of the matching funds that you're bringing to it, and then your necessity, which is sort of, you know, what we lost if we didn't give you the funding, would you be able to keep going, that sort of stuff. And then marked there as a placeholder for future years is the sustainability plan. So what I'm looking for today is, I just sort of threw some numbers up there for percentages. What, where you want those, you know, right now, those top three, what percentage of the score do you want those given?
What do you think?
The matching funds, number two, is that, do you think 20% is? Is where you want to start with that?
20% of the, is.
20% of the score?
Of the score. Not 20% matching funds, but 20% of the score.
No, I'm not ready to bump that yet.
We're weighing 60% of how they're being married on the benefit, which is the big thing for us. And then, if they're matching funds. And then they're set. I'm happy with that.
I'm not going to, I was going to say that might not be a bad place to start. I'm okay with that.
It can be adjusted.
Yeah. It's up to the county.
And, and next year's is going to have to be adjusted because we're adding another.
Sustainability.
Right, exactly.
That's probably a good place to start.
Okay.
Now, while we're kind of talking about scores, going back to the earlier conversation about what people kind of fall below, do you want a minimum score? Do you want, want to say if you don't score at least 70%, you're not eligible? Or, or I guess that's a better way to say it, where's that funded, fund, do not fund line? What, you know, how high the score do you need to get to be eligible to get funding?
I guess I would ask Sandy, what, how do you differentiate between benefit to the county and necessity? I mean, those are sort of the same.
Well, I would say that benefit to county is, is, I would say, it's what, what are you proposing and what is it going to do for the county? Uh, necessity is saying, if we don't give you funding, are you going to shut the program down? Are you going to have to close doors? You have to lay somebody off? That, those sorts of things. So one's saying this is the positives.
The applicant, not the necessity of the county.
Necessity of funding.
Right, of, of the funding that you're asking for, what, how necessary is this?
Okay, that's where I was.
For you to survive, yeah.
Sort of the same thing.
That's a good point that we probably want to just clarify that. And then necessity of funding instead of just necessity.
Because it just, you know, what would be lost if the program isn't funded? Well, from what you just said, what would be lost would be that program.
That benefit, yeah.
So a cutoff.
The cutoff?
Oh, yes. Is there a cutoff that we would like to unfund and not fund it?
I don't know what it would be.
I mean, 70% is a C. It's kind of how I put it, right? I mean, so.
I'm going more to 60%, but yeah.
I, I'm just saying, like, like to.
But, but that doesn't mean you're going to get funded, that just means that you're on that list of eligible entities.
Yeah, and what we're trying to eliminate here really is unfunded, isn't it? Because, just because they don't get, they, their necessity isn't there, so they don't get that 20%. But maybe next year it is and they come up a little higher. Do we want to have any unfunded? Not, not.
I mean, I, I don't foresee, especially in these.
Is there a chance?
Because the money, we got to them anyway.
Right.
I don't know that we need to, I don't know that we need to set a.
A minimum.
A minimum.
I don't think so either, because it.
They're going to be.
Those would have been weighted out in eligibility.
That's right, exactly. Yes, yes, there's going to be a point where they just fall off the.
Because they're, they're not eligible.
Anyway, yeah. If you score lower than that, you're never going to make it.
These are tough questions today.
You guys answered the easy ones last time.
I know.
Okay, and so this is sort of a proposed timeline. Now, this is based on the idea that we can either today or perhaps at a special meeting next week approve and finalize some documents. Or at least approve with edits. So that we can make it available by the 27th. So if we can get applications out on or around the 27th, that'll give about three weeks for the applicants to fill out their stuff and get back to the treasurer's office. Gives one week to get the staff reports done, which is extremely tight.
Is there a reason that there's such a gap between when the staff reports are due and when we would actually take the stuff on the 10?
Uh, trying to get it ahead of the first budget committee meeting so that we can get it. So it needs to be out early enough that the budget committee can review and look them over.
Do you provide that to the budget committee ahead of time?
In the past, yes.
But, I mean, the budget, the budget as well, or now we're talking about it?
I try to have the budget out a minimum of a week before the first budget committee meeting.
So we definitely, it needs.
But those are just requests in the first, you know, the first iteration, so.
Right, so we could push it back a week. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Having seven to 27th have the group staff reports due the third. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Because when we discuss, when we have that first budget committee meeting, is that kind of an overview? Is that kind of, we're not going to.
That's the overview, right, but.
At that point in time, right?
No, we don't talk about this all the second budget committee meeting.
Okay, so that gives us.
Yeah, the only thing we talk about is just the, the total.
Right.
But that's just the ask, so.
So that, that would work.
They need to be, they probably need to be, I mean, April 3rd, still the Budget Committee needs time to review it, so, I mean, a week's not necessarily a lot of time.
That's all we can get.
Right?
For anything.
Right?
And that's, that's pretty good.
So is that, because.
But if they got, if they received it with their draft budget, their proposed budget, on April 3rd, that'd be okay, I think. I mean, I.
So the staff report would just need to be done?
Right.
To submit by April 3rd? It doesn't have to be, there's nothing else that you would need to do?
No.
Format it or anything, it'd just go with?
Well, hopefully it'd be for, I mean, I was thinking it's a done report, right?
Yeah, okay.
Hopefully.
Yeah. So then the staff report's.
I mean, my, my vision of getting locked in the room was we lock ourselves in the room, and we each just sit down and write comments, and then the staff report's just a, you know, condensed version of those comments. Here's what we think about this, and here's why we rated it as such. And that's, that's, that was my idea of what the staff report looked like. And it would just be all three, well, I had three in my head, but, you know, three members' comments, basically, mashed together. So, I mean, I, yeah, it'd take time to do that, but, I don't know how long it'd take to get through all of them. A few hours is minimum.
That's how many we get.
Right?
Right now, we get 20, but if we open it up, maybe we get 30.
Yeah, so, might take all day.
Well, the thing too, with the tight deadline between when the applications are due and the staff report, is you also want to build in just a little bit of time if there's follow-up questions.
Right.
That you need information back from, you need probably a little bit, so.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good adjustment.
In terms of the, the application available, that raises the question to the commissioners, would you guys, are we prepared to vote on this this afternoon? And if not, we would need to be looking at doing a special meeting probably next week to approve them.
I can do it this afternoon.
I think so, I think we're making that kind of progress.
Okay. And we, we put a placeholder on the agenda, so, but I just wanted to make sure that this is the answer to the question.
I, I think we've answered things really well.
Yeah, we're not putting anything up the air.
If you're comfortable approving it as edited, then, I mean, you can always, if it comes out and I've done something really stupid, you can always take it back.
Okay, so I think that timeline will work if we are prepared to take action this afternoon.
Okay. So, last thing is just the application. So I've thrown together a five-part application. First one's just general information, the organization, their phone number, address, all that sort of stuff. Two is a program narrative, which is basically just an essay-style question of, you know, explain what your organization's purpose and role is in the county, how you're gonna be using the funding you're asking for, how your operations fit within the strategic priority areas that we talked about before, which was economic development, infrastructure, and livability, quality of life. And then going to a little bit of your organization's financial need and your long-term plan. And then the follow-up to that, section three is just some more specific program information that gets into things like, have you requested operation support money in the past? You know, how much did you get last year? How did you use the funding that you got in the past? Do you expect to request additional funding support in the future? If so, please explain your short-term and long-term financial support needs, which is again designed to get them thinking about that long-term sustainability plan. And then listing out what are the other funding sources that your organization has looked into, which gets into that county as a last resort type of question. Then the next one is, is the budget, which I've thrown together, or stolen, I should basically say a, a standard budget form that will be put out, this is an Excel sheet, so that it can be populated, it's all self-calculating, which I think will be really easy for people to use. And then a match funding form that lays out, okay, this is the money that we say that we're using as match, this is where it's coming from, how much, whether it's secured or pending.
The one question I had about the match was the authorized signatures.
Yes.
Right.
And whether that might be a little.
I don't know if we need.
Much. Only the, I mean, the example I wrote down was the schools and their state funding. It's like, who, who from the state is gonna sign?
Right.
That for them? So, to me, I, to me, they're signing something that basically says this is accurate, and that we should trust that when they say that they've got pending matches, that we just trust that they are being truthful.
Sure. I was thinking that.
And then throughout these, all the places where I've sort of left in placeholders, have talked to the county court office, those will all be changed to Treasurer's Office.
The Treasurer's Office.
You're all, all these different.
And is it gonna be submitted to Treasurer's Office here?
Yeah, all, all the way through, I'll have.
Okay, and it'd be, it'd be okay if they e-delivered it? Because it just says in person. Could they email it to me?
Well, I just got an email on there, except my email, but I'll change that, your email.
It's an email, or mail, or hand delivery.
Or hand delivery, oh, okay, I wouldn't read it right. See his mail, probably. I did, well, I was just trying to, because I was thinking about, yeah, it's the way that your brain works sometimes, just get it out.
Is there a different language we could put for the section that says postmarks do not mail? How you, how can you refuse that?
Must be received.
Must be received in the office by a day.
Not, not postmarked.
Yeah.
We want that to be clear, but I just thought, it seems like there was.
Which is good, sometimes they're eligible.
On the budget information, are you asking for the budget for just the program they're asking for funding, or their organizational budget? I would think that you would want to see like the most recent financial statement to see.
Well, that's good.
Their, their need.
We need to add that, we want to see their.
Yeah.
We either want to see their financial statement, or we want to see their, their current operating budget in addition to this budget for the money they're asking us.
Well, and even the operation budget, just make sure you have some financial statements attached to that, to see, I mean, your budget's your plan, it's not necessarily where you're at. And then that will show you, that'll give you a good indication of need also.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, you're talking.
I just added in the.
The balance sheet.
Yeah. So do we want, if we're going to ask them for just their, their budget, for them to fill out our form on just the money that they're requesting from us, and then are we also gonna ask for their budget, and are we also gonna ask for some kind of financial statement? Or are we just asking for a financial statement? How much, how many, how much additional information do we want from them?
I'd like to see their full budget.
And I'd also like to see like a profit.
What they think of that budget are they asking.
As you know, if they, if they present their most recent financial statement, it should have budget natural.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Then you can see their reserves. You can see, if they could do a LB50 or ED50 for education, I mean, it's on there too.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see a financial statement.
Yeah, definitely.
Probably more.
I don't know if that's what you want.
Whatever you guys want, I'm good with.
That's what I'm headed to ask, some.
That's not my thing.
Okay, all right.
So are, are there any other specific questions that you would like to ask?
Are we, I had some language questions on the information that we received. And I have some notes that I need a minute maybe to just look over real quick and make sure that I've asked all my questions. Can we give a quick break?
I would love to take, like, say, five minutes and come back into 25.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna be back in session, please. Okay, so, question for Sandy, for the court's benefit. This operational support grant guide is what we will be distributing to the public describing the grant.
Yeah.
Correct. I'm wondering how, who all is gonna.
I see it as an attachment to the application. You get the application, you get a copy of this, it'll be on the website, and it'll hopefully be whoever needs it, you know.
So not just the internal document?
No, no, this is, in fact, on the application, it's mentioned as an attachment, or it's a data form. If you have questions, see the guide.
Okay. Okay. All right, so, do we want to go to more?
Do you have more?
No, you can, I mean, I'll, you may have the same things I did, so what, what do you got?
Oh, um, there was a spot in, I can't remember where it was on this, I have to write it down on my piece of paper. When you're talking about the review process, um, no, I'm gonna come back to that one. Then, I might as well just go to page four, where it says, under the funding decision, the final sentence, I think needs, we need to revise the final sentence. It says the Budget Committee will make the final decision on funding, and the Budget Committee's funding decision is final.
So, so the intent of having that sentence is specifically to get rid of the people who come back afterwards, and I don't like how it turned out, I didn't get funded, or my funding got cut from what I needed. It's intended for that purpose, to say, look, it's done, there's not a recourse to come back and complain afterwards, it's gone through the process, the process is final. So we can reword that, but I think it's important to have something like that in there.
And there was, I actually wrote down, no, I thought it could be reworded, it said, just so it says it once, so it's not saying it twice, just saying something that the, the Budget Committee will make the decision on funding, and it's final. It's something simple like that.
Doesn't the Budget Committee make the final decision on funding?
Or the, the end?
Done, yeah, done, that's it. You don't mean to say, and the Budget Committee's final decision is final? Because you're just saying the same thing twice.
Right. Okay, and then there was another place, and you know, and I get, sometimes when I read guidelines that we are going to be ruled by, I get, certain little words jump out at me. On page three, it says something about during the review process, it says funding decision is the sole discretion of the County Budget Committee. I don't know if just taking out the word "sole" is, would be enough to make me feel more at ease with that, but you know, there are other, there are other staff, other, that are weighing in on this, so I guess I just didn't.
But they're not making the funding decision. So they're, they might be doing reviews and making recommendations, but they're not making a decision.
Okay, does this, does this, I guess, eliminate the county court from making a decision at some, at some other time?
Well, kind of, because we're saying that there's only going to be one time a year when this goes through, it's gonna go through the budget process with the full Budget Committee, which is the three of you and the three appointed people, and it's saying, we're not going to accept throughout the year additional requests. Now, obviously, if there's a true emergency.
And that's, that's the kind of situations that I worry about.
But, you know, I think a true emergency is a true emergency.
It's size our hands to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Here's the thing, we are the county court, we can always reverse ourselves. So, I mean, that's the thing, right? Is that we're tying our own hands, but I think there's some value in saying to the community that we value the Budget Committee's decisions.
Right.
And I think there's a danger in us sending the message that, well, we'll go with the Budget Committee unless we don't like what they say.
Yeah.
Well, yes, and I would not like to make a habit of doing anything like that, for sure, but I just wonder, you know, there was just a situation last year, so, of course, I'm still wondering about that. The last question I had is, and this is kind of a sticky one. Do we want to include anything in here saying, and, and do we even want to do this? Saying that the county court or the Budget Committee may impose additional stipulations upon acceptance of grant funds? Is that wrong?
We have a fix.
Cover that risk of your agreements. Well, just saying, you know, because there are situations where, um.
So, I, I think maybe in the agreement section, we could add something more specific in there. You know, that, you know, right now it says applicants will be required to sign a grant agreement, which outlines the requirements for allowable use of funds and reporting prior to release of funds. Grants may be provided on a reimbursement basis, requiring the applicant to provide group of expenses incurred. Failure to comply with requirements outlined in the grant agreement may preclude an applicant from being eligible to future grant offerings. So if you want.
Something says additional stipulations may be.
Right.
Imposed.
Yes.
Other duties as assigned.
Yes.
Yeah, and that, some sort of, we should maybe all ask everyone about some, maybe just without.
And I think out of all my chicken scratch notes, I think that would.
That was wrong?
For this.
That's pretty easy. And the, one thing just to note, a typo for you, Sandy, under duties, is it has applications available April 27th. So that makes February.
That makes me nervous, because then.
Oh, on page, yeah, very likely here.
On page four.
That timeline was right, this one's.
Thank you.
And then just in terms of what we're releasing, I have a lot of scratch on mine, I was really going wild on that. So I'm not sure that we actually need to have the blue box with eligibility criteria versus merit criteria.
That was for us, though, wasn't it?
Yeah, that was more just as a reminder, that's why it's colored, yeah.
Okay, just checking. The other thing that I, this is maybe more stylistic for me, is I'm wondering whether in the foreword, it's really necessary to include all the information about where the funds are coming from. I think it's, I think it's acceptable for us to say, as the people who are the stewards of the county's money, that we expect some accountability for how it's spent, and that accountability would be in place regardless of whether the funds run out or not. So I'm not sure that it's necessary to have, like, the second paragraph. Or even the first two sentences of the third paragraph. I think it's okay to just say, so here's how I kind of wrote it. Gillen County provides competitive grant funding opportunities for programs and projects that benefit the county and its citizens. Operational support, each year, the Gillen County Budget Committee designates a portion of available discretionary funds to support local communities. So I basically took the fourth paragraph, moved it up, cut the last sentence of the fourth paragraph. Removed the second paragraph and the first two sentences of the third paragraph. And then just said, operational support grants should not be counted on as long-term funding sources for operations. Successful applicants will be asked to create and follow a sustainability plan so they can move toward long-term viability without county support. So just really simple, but I, you know, I don't think we need to justify the reasons why we want accountability for public funds, you know? I think that should be a given, that we expect that people are accountable when they're asking for public dollars. And other than that. That was pretty much it. If you have to respond to anything? Does it have any other edits, changes, questions? Or do you know? Sound good?
I think that sounds good.
Okay, so, uh, the plan then, this is for the public's benefit, this is on the court's agenda this afternoon, so if you are interested in that, watching how it all unfolds, feel free to tune in for that. Okay. Are we going on? Strategic investment? Let's do strategic investments, since special projects has a little bit longer leeway. That way we don't get too.
So, okay, so there's three of them?
There's three.
So strategic, so this is just projects, basically? But the projects that could be considered twice a year?
Right, more of the, the bigger, broader type of projects, is, is the way I articulate.
The ones that normally would have come to the court outside of special projects, so like.
During the budget cycle.
Right.
Thank you.
Except that we're adding a second cycle in the fall as well.
Correct, it's just gonna be decided by the court then?
Right.
Okay.
And so, I've, I've thrown up, again, the, the differences between the two, which for the strategic investment projects, which, if you guys want to change the name or anything, that's fine, they're designed to strategically invest county funding in projects and events that have a significant benefit to the county, maybe two cycles per year, one in the spring, There'll be two cycles per year, one in the spring, that kind of goes along with the budget cycle, and then a second operating fall. The budget committee will be responsible for sort of setting a funding cap in the budget process. And that, but the actual, the way I'm proposing it, the actual project decisions will be done by the county court. So similar to what's been done with special projects in the past.
So of the group, of the group that came in last year, during the, the ones that we considered during the budget process.
Yes.
How many else, again, do you think were, were projects? Like the high school road.
Two, maybe?
Mostly, mostly, um, operating then?
Or almost all.
Yeah, so you've got the, the Port of Arlington, um, High New CDC, I don't know, that's, excuse me, that was operational funding, see that. Most of them are operational. But there, there's a, a couple of them that sort of had a construction component, so like the South Gillen Health Center, I believe that one was split between operational and upgrading the dental office. So some of them have some split in there.
And I would say that my, my expectation, once we have this in place, is that this would eliminate folks who are coming to us other times of the year with projects. So, in essence, if somebody came to, comes to us, says, hey, I have this great idea, I need, I need $400,000 for this project, we would say, hey, that's great, the budget cycle opens for this, for projects in October. So that it's not coming, the one-offs aren't, would stop coming. So I wouldn't necessarily go by who applied previously, because there's people who've been asking in between budget for things.
Yes.
And those people would be funneled into this process.
And a lot of, and are we thinking that a lot of the groups that apply for the special projects grants will now come into this operational during the budget process?
Yeah. So, so the, the, the ones that have been asking for operational funding, yes, will go into that operational pool that we just talked about today. But I, I think most of those projects will probably stay in special projects. As long as they're, there might be some of them that have been lacking some of the match components. But I guess that'll depend on what we decide here, if we're going to put a hardcore match component in this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so.
So, yeah, the first two questions are same, what can they be used for, what can they not be used for? So, you know, I, I think, what, what I took away from the last work session was that these were sort of geared towards the bigger, broader type of projects. This isn't where you would come to ask for $2,000 to run your soccer camp or something like that. But that would still fall under special projects.
So these, we may not have very many of these. Maybe.
I think it'll fluctuate from year to year. I think you'll have, every so often, you'll have a gigantic request come in, and every once in a while, you'll have some mid-sized ones.
Do we need to spell out specifically in what they fund that these are for capital construction projects? So that it's clear, I mean, because it says, like, for instance, supplies and materials in here, which if you just took that as a one-off, you could think that that's some other, you know, I mean, do we need to specify? We say contractor costs, that kind of stuff, but I wonder if we need to be clear that, like, we're willing to fund infrastructure, large scale, I mean, we're willing to fund fiber, we're willing to fund potentially facilities, those kinds of things, but... It doesn't, to me, it doesn't spell out as cleanly here. I mean, it says we'll do contract, I, I just feel like we need to say, we're talking about something that will be in existence after we're done with this.
And so.
Like, there's an.
The syllables, we're not funding syllables.
I mean, I don't know. Does it feel clear enough? To me, it didn't feel clear enough that this is, this is intended to fund construction.
Yeah, I don't agree with that.
And I, I don't, it isn't there that specific, I don't know.
Yeah, and I wasn't sure that where we were going, I, yeah, I guess I don't know what the, how, how much money are we talking about with these grants? And are people going to know which grant there should be applying for?
That's why we're having them go to one person. So when they go to, that would be.
Oh, this is the one you want, the special projects, you don't want, or you're a big one, and you want this.
Yeah, so that would be the idea, having the one-stop shop, is that they go to Kelly, or they talk to Nathan, and then they say, no, this is the appropriate, this is the appropriate program for you. So staff would be.
But I, I think that if you want to make it specifically about capital projects, capital and infrastructure projects, then we can put that right in the title and lay that out very much more clearly. My, my question on that is, um, what about, like, events? Do you want that to be able to fall into this or not, which is kind of what I left a little bit vague?
I mean, how, how big are the special project grants? Could those cover the events, and this could just be left for capital construction? Or are there some events that are coming in that are large enough that are really more than what we would want to do under a special project grant?
So for special projects, there was about $170,000 last year in that pool, north and south combined. So I think most of the projects, or the, the events, I should say, have come through that cycle. I just didn't know if we can definitely do that, and that might be a good way to make things more clear, to say, that's for events, this is for capital projects.
Yeah, I, I, I did that, yeah, I did that. This is strategic investment or, you know.
And to me, this strategic investment is a long-term.
Yes, it's not an event, whether.
Return.
Yeah, you missed that event.
Rachel, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, uh, first thing that comes to mind, the last year, there was a $40,000 ask from the Lone Rock Church to redo the roof. And I was thinking, when I just read this, that that might be, they might be more eligible for this pool than special projects. Yeah.
Well, they wouldn't be eligible, it's faith-based organization.
Yes, but we also said historical.
Historical building preservation.
That's how we were feeling around that.
But I'm thinking, if, if most of the, if most of the event requests are of a number that, that the special projects fund can fund, let's just make the lines a little cleaner.
I like that. Definitely, because this isn't about events, this is about structure, infrastructure.
These are big investments, these are, we want to build a housing division, right, kind of projects.
So for clarity then, um, uh, infrastructure improvements, such as remodeling of an existing facility or something like that, I'm talking about the self-health district. I mean, there's been, you know, phases of improving the whole infrastructure, so this is what we're talking about.
Capital construction.
It's not a huge project, but, okay.
Yeah, right, so, yeah, I wouldn't necessarily, just, did we want to include the events under this? And I'm thinking we want to strip them out and, and just focus on construction. Because then that will be much more clear on what we mean under examples.
Right.
That we're talking about supplies for, building supplies, et cetera. Okay, let's ask.
Okay, so then, kind of that same thing of not be used for. And so my, my big question here is, like, employee salaries or standard operational costs that they would have, whether they were doing this big project or not? Versus, okay, we're doing this big project, so Joe Blow is going to spend this much time. Do we want to allow the sort of operational cost or overhead that the entity is going to take on? Or do we want to say, no, this is strictly should be used for, and that other stuff, that's your match?
I would go with that route.
Yeah.
That it, it can be used as a match, but not to fund, because otherwise you'll, I mean, people will get very creative, I think, with how to turn this into an operational fund, if we are not specific about.
Okay, and then just the, the general guidelines here, it's sort of what I captured at the last work session. And again, get to that question of setting a, a minimum match.
I mean, to me, this makes, I would like to set a minimum, and I think it needs to be higher than what we set under operational. I mean, I think most private funders are going to want 50% matched. To me, personally, I would like to see folks matching for these big projects up to 50%. And that can be in-kind, and, I mean, it doesn't have to be dollar-for-dollar, it can be an in-kind match. But, I mean, I would really like to see us leveraging these funds for, in essence, we're saying we want to double our money for the investments that we make. So, I don't know, how do you, you guys feel if that's too high, or?
What was the amount again?
50%.
So are there, are there entities that are currently using this that are not going to be, are, are not doing that, or are not going to be able to do that, that we have previously funded for, like the port, or, you know?
I might, you know, the ports, I guess it depends on how you look at it. If you look at it on an individual project, um, probably not. If you look at it as part of the total budget, probably. But if we're saying in, in individual project, and just use the pick on the port, um, so if we give the port $100,000 for a specific project, and that's the full cost of that project, then no, it doesn't mean that 50%, unless they've got something else coming in from a different source.
What do you think? You guys can write in, too.
Is that? Is it too high? Or might just be.
I like 33.3, to say a third. I would have done 12.5% on the other one, too, because that's eight.
I was scared you were going to say 12.5.
I was quiet.
For a while.
For a while.
I mean, I may be more stringent. I just know, having raised money privately, they don't want to pay more than half. And there's a reason for that, you know, I mean, if we.
Do we have examples of other, um, grant organizations, like the Ford leadership?
Ford, when they funded the, the, um, the childcare, they wanted to see commitments, actual commitments, over 50% before they would even consider, um, funding the childcare. So Jennifer had to basically have pending commitments from just about have the entire project funded, before they were willing to. And part of that, you know, there's a reason for that, part of that was, you don't want to commit dollars to a project that doesn't have other funding, and, and, and then they come back to us and say, oh, oh, we're $200,000 short, and, but now you've already committed, so you've brought up more money. Yeah, and so there's a reason why funders do this. So that you can contain costs.
I can think of projects, too, though, that didn't show any way to sustain themselves after the building was built. There was no source of revenue to maintain it, to occupy it or anything, so isn't that.
One in Gillen County, though.
Oh, right, yeah.
More than one, more than one instance.
Isn't that not a part of this, too? I mean, if they show that they can maintain their project over a long period of time, would, would then the matching not be, could be reduced, or, I mean, I don't know. I don't know anything about this stuff, not been involved, but I'm just thinking of the buildings that, or projects that were done, and then had no, so to say.
I mean.
That's a good point, thank you.
I mean, to me, the, the issue with matching is how much do you want to leverage your money? I mean, that's really what we're asking here, is how much do we want, if we're loaning out a million dollars, how much value do we think is appropriate for the taxpayers to get on that million dollars? So if we think that we want them to see 2 million, then you do balance it at 50%. If you think it's somewhere lower than, I mean, that's how you set the matching, is how much do you think is appropriate to receive back for the county's, for every dollar that they put in? How much do you think is appropriate for the taxpayers to receive back in value? Is the question we're asking, to phrase it another way. I don't know, I threw out my number. People seem nervous about 50%.
Ben Franklin says 50%, which was a double reminder.
Well, that's why you asked the question, what do other funding entities do?
I mean, yeah, Ford, Ford was pretty clear, I think Ford in the end funded 40% of the project. But they, they wanted funders already on the hook and commitments before they would even consider the application.
Well, it was the same, I mean, it was part of the sound system, the port was the same deal, minimum 50%.
Yeah.
And that was just the maximum, like, 50.
Yeah, the maximum that they would get was 50, but they were aiming to be 35 to 40% of the project.
I think Peter has a comment.
Peter.
Yeah, there's, there's several different kinds of grant programs, if you're looking at, like, the Ford Family Foundation, yes, those are 50% grants, but like Connect Oregon had been 15% match for their big capital projects around the state. They've kind of moved that up to 30% match is, is where they've been heading because of the, some of the fiscal constraints Oregon's been in, but they had been 15% match. So I would suggest that you allow yourself some room and not tighten it down too much that, you know, organizations have to come up with a 50% match, or a lot of these projects would never get done. And, and sometimes, like, if the port's doing a project, if we can get a state grant and we use the county match, then we're, you know, maybe 15 or 30% we're asking of, of a project. And so it can be flipped around, too, but it's project by project. You know, I can think of some projects, they, they wouldn't, they just wouldn't be done if they weren't funded or almost fully.
I mean, I, I get that, but I also want to prioritize people who are going out and making these dollars stretch.
Well, I think you, you know, in your grant application, you allow yourself room, that you would prioritize the best applications that the county gets, and, you know, the ones that are asking for the full freight, they may be the last one funded or not funded because of the project. But I still think you would want to allow yourselves the room and the flexibility to, to look at the merits of an individual project and decide.
Can you base it on a project? I'm just throwing it out there, that, you know, you may be asked, or a 20%, 30% match may be required, depending on the project.
I mean, we could, here's, here's what I think, here's what I'm sort of trying to head off. Is the idea that people come up with a good idea, and they say, the county's going to fund it. And they don't go and look to see if there's any other funding available. And so part of the match requires a little bit of labor work on the organizer's, organizer's end to make sure that they are coming up with funds or resources. I mean, it doesn't even have to be financial resources, sometimes it's just, we're providing staffing and, and, oh, by the way, you know, the road department's helping us with this piece, or, you know, I mean, they can find different combinations. But I just, I, I think having some sort of match sends a message that the expectation is we are a partner in this, and that we're not a sole funder. So I'm definitely okay with dropping below 50% if that's too high. But I do think it's important to not set an expectation that we're just going to fund fully every single project. Even good projects sometimes will not get done, because if there's not enough buy-in, there's not the resources to do it. And, and to me, if it's, if it's that worthwhile, there are resources out there that I want to see people going after and bringing into the county. So.
Applicable to us that we're not.
Well, and the other. And the other argument to make is that the more that you require the match, the more projects that we're actually able to help in. So if we expend this on one big project, and we, it's a good project, but that's the end of the money. And to me, the folks who are bringing, you know, a dollar to match every dollar that we're spending, that allows us to take that extra amount and fund the next good project that comes. that allows us to take that extra amount and fund the next good project that comes, so.
And this is a number two, though, that we could play with a little bit. I mean, next year, we may see that it needs to be higher, or...
Yeah. I mean, I do think we need to set something.
Yes.
I threw out 50 as a place to start, because that's where most private funders are. But I'm okay with going lower if you guys have a number in mind. It just gets back to the original question, is how much do you think the taxpayers should get back for their dollar investment? These are hard questions.
This financial person's...
What did you bait?
What percentage do you think?
Well, I think, like, 100% back, so that'd be 50%, right?
Right.
But, I mean...
I mean, you've seen a lot of the projects that have come through, and...
I have. Their levels of return are nowhere near that high. I mean, that'd be my general comment, so I don't...
35%?
They're nowhere near that high.
Yeah, but we're setting...we're trying to set the bar a little higher than what we've had the best.
I do, I think a third, or 35%, if you like, around 5% or something would be...
I do, thank you.
Would be a lot better.
Or 2% in one place and one place.
Yeah, that'd be no good, right?
Well, the apple can stay...
I mean, the goal...the thing is, it's like sales...it's...so I was economist, right? So what do you do when you're trying to sell a product? We never tell the salesman what the bottom line is to begin with, because the salesman will end up selling the car, or whatever, for the bottom line, cuz they wanna make the sale. So the goal is to incentivize them to go get as much money as they can. So it could be, maybe set it 50% and say, borrowing, or, you know, put some kind of clause in there that may be reduced. And that gives you a little flexibility. But, I don't know, I mean, then they're sitting here, and they're asking, and you don't have this hard number to say.
They say, you can't have two sets of rules, or you're paying...
Well, maybe reduce to 35%, or, you could still put a floor in there.
Right.
Well, what you could do is you put the floor in, and then you prioritize projects that are...
Those start getting too complicated.
They'll score higher in the merit if they have more.
Yeah.
And then they'll be higher on the list of who gets funded.
Exactly. So, I mean, I think I said this during the last time, that if it's... if we're spending a million dollars, and somebody tells me, "We can spend a million dollars," and they'll... it's a $2 million building, versus, "I can spend a million dollars, and I'm the only funder on a million dollar building, I'm gonna take the 2 million," even though it's the same amount going out, but the return for taxpayers is higher.
Higher.
Right, so the way I have it worded now, in the merit recomp criteria, is under matching funds leverage, it says preference will be given to applications that show greater financial contributions with other sources. So I think if we pair that with some sort of minimum, then I think we're pretty well covered there.
So what do we think about Nathan's number of 35%?
Trying to share his number.
Nathan, sorry. Nathan's amended by...
Pull the bar over.
By Sherry's...Sherry's amendment to Nathan's number of 35%.
Round it up.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
You're okay?
Let's place the start.
The third is...hey, it'll get people...it'll get people thinking. Okay.
And then my last question before we move on here. Do you...we kind of talked about it a little bit last time, was the having projects be reimbursement based. Is that something we want to say for all projects, or do we wanna leave it in there either or when we do the contracting?
I think we wanna do that on a case by case, or...
I do too.
Okay.
Depending on the project.
Depending on the project.
And that's at whose discretion?
Uh, that... Hours.
That would be a question of discretion.
Hours when we sign these agreements.
Could that be part of your merit, is if we can do it on a reimbursement basis, you get one point?
It's easier to try.
I think you should get less points, because obviously you don't need the money as bad.
Well, no...
I mean, the reimbursement does create some better accountability, really.
And a little more work.
It's more work, but it's...we'll save the county money long-term versus here's 100 grand, and they only end up spending 80.
Depends on more work of how often you have them reimburse.
Right. It's not a lot more. Well, it depends on how many project grants we give out.
Yeah, there you go.
Give out 50 of them, it's a lot more work. If you give out one or two, it's not that big.
Are we thinking, we...I mean, we could get preference points to...
No, I think we just need to make a determination, depending on the project, how we want to...
Okay.
How we want to work. Is there anything in here that does require an explanation of... if a building's being built, what the sustainability is? That they know they're going to have, I mean, it's an office, a building, an office building, and I know that I have...I'm building five offices, and I know I have three rented out. I have a dentist and an eye doctor, and they've already committed.
So there's...
Is there something in there that says...
There's not right now. So what I did after Sheriff Bedcore's comment, was I added a question on the application that said, "How will you operate after construction?"
Yeah.
And so I think I will add that into the application. So I think that was really good.
Yes, definitely.
Okay. Okay, rule of budget committee. So the first question, I think, we maybe need to decide for the spring grants, is, is that part of the budget process? Are those going before the budget committee as well, or are those court decisions?
That's a good question.
Cuz that's kind of the fundamental thing. The fall one, I think we've already decided that that would be a court decision.
And I sort of kept it that way for the spring cycle, cuz I felt like those were cleaner lines of how this grant funding program works.
And not depending on what time of year it is.
If we mix and match, you know, the time of year.
What do you see?
Option one.
You like one? Gee, I like two.
You're tougher than I am.
Why do you prefer?
I don't know.
I mean, to me, the...
Because it's cut and dry.
Yeah, I think, I think one just...
That's me, I'm a cut and dry, you know that. So if...
I mean, I think it's a problem, I have with option one, so you have this first come, first served thing in option one, which could be an issue, but maybe first come, first serves, good.
So if we have, if we set a...say we do option two, but we have somebody come in during the budget process that is higher than that...
Then the cap.
Yeah, you're the cap.
Then we're stuck. Whereas if we had option one, we would be able to give more money to...
The spring one.
The spring one, and then not have as much later.
Well, I'd give more money to the fall one if the spring one isn't used up, so I think that's... But I don't know, maybe you wanna be real rigid, maybe there's... My...I guess my concern is gonna be something ridiculous, that it'd be like $5 over the cap, and...
Yeah.
Maybe not that low, but guessing.
Yeah.
And ultimately, as long as the budget committee approves the total amount, I'm okay with it. I don't think they're gonna care whether it's distributed in the spring or fall.
I mean, how...what...give me the number. What kind of number are we talking about here? For example? That they would set as the cap, for how much we're gonna use...
What are we funding this?
This whole year for strategic investment grant funding.
Well, that's gonna be our...
Two and a half million.
You have to be determined.
A million?
I'm gonna say it's a million dollars.
Okay, it's a million dollars. So, if the...but if the budget committee decided that at the beginning of the year, they're not necessarily deciding who's going to get this funding. They're just gonna say, "We got a million dollars, and this is the figure we're plugging into our budget."
Right, right.
So I don't know if they need to set a spring cap and a fall cap. Do we want them just to decide what number we're putting in the budget, or do we want...
Okay.
I see that tightened up.
This is the money that's going in for this fund, and we have a request in the spring and press in the fall, and this is how much is there. If we use it up all in the spring, then there's nothing left in the fall.
And this is, and this is how much we're gonna set aside this year, next year, for this particular purpose?
Right.
What do you think?
No, I...cuz my follow-up question would have been, if we did a spring and fall caps, is are we...could, for instance, somebody apply for spring, get the spring grant, but it have...it'd still be short of their...
And come back for the...
And come back for the...like, were we gonna allow them in twice? Or is it better just to fund it once, go through the application process once?
I think you wanna avoid having two sets of agreements, and two sets of reporting, and all that sort of stuff.
So to me, it may...I think it's a little cleaner to just have the budget committee set the cap, and then let's see what comes in for the spring cycle. I think it's not gonna be almost all operational, to be honest. I don't think we're probably gonna get that many projects initially. I know, they may come in in the fall, even, so. To me, that's...
Option one?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Oh, nice.
Okay, so this is just going through the review process again, pretty much what we talked about before on the operational, except that this one is doing what we just said, that the budget committee will adopt in the budget process, will approve the budget that includes a cap for the spring cycle. Otherwise, you know, it's the same thing. There's an initial review by...for eligibility, and then there's the initial staff review that goes on to the county court as a recommendation, and the county court makes its final decision.
I'm okay with that.
Yep, can we just...
All right, so back to the staff report. We want, I'm assuming, the same team that we had in the last one?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And scoring.
Oh, boy.
Again, these are just numbers that I threw up there to have numbers up there.
Yeah.
Start the conversation. I mean, I think 60% for benefit of the county, that's what we want for the one, that's what that goes to start.
So I'm kind of thinking...I'm rethinking whether we need necessity...
In this one?
In this one. I would almost rather...
I think that's covered in benefit, don't you? The necessity is...
Well, but, yeah. Yeah, cuz there's no ongoing expenses.
Cuz in theory, you're not...this isn't something that's gonna go away if we don't fund it. It just wouldn't happen, right? If it's a capital project.
Well, it could, if it was an improvement, though, say it's a structure of the roof. I mean, it could be a necessity. I mean, it would go away. But it's still a benefit to put a roof on it, cuz it's gonna go away.
But I guess that we're looking at it differently than what it really is intended for, right? Would the project be able to continue without county support? That's the real question.
Right.
If we don't give them the money, they just won't do it.
And, you know...
And it's a hole in the roof.
Right.
Yeah, it'll likely fall off, yeah.
Right, and so there, you know, with the hole in the roof scenario, they would say, "Okay, we've got a hole in the roof, we need to fix it. Otherwise, we're gonna come back next year, and we're gonna be asking for a roof and water damage repair."
Right, right. So what if we... I just...
You know, I think like three and four could maybe be combined.
Yeah. What I'd like to do is actually prioritize matching a little bit higher. So I wonder if we can do timeliness and necessity together as one, maybe as 15%, and then make matching funds 25%.
I'd like to have a page flip.
Does that make sense?
Yes, three and four together, and at what level?
Three and four together at 15%, and then take the 10% that was under timeliness, and move it up to matching funds, so it'd be 25% would be matching funds leveraged.
Okay.
Cuz that covers the level.
Okay.
Does that work?
Hmm? That sounds good.
Okay, got it. What's next?
Timelines.
Timelines.
And it's timing, cuz it's two cycles.
So...
The spring cycle's the same as all the rest of the cycles?
And we're gonna change the staff report due to April 3rd.
Right.
The changes that we made on the last one, are we gonna carry them through onto this one?
Yes.
Like if we made changes to sentences, and we're gonna do the same thing?
Okay.
Oh, I had a question about the timeline on the fall. And why November? Why wouldn't it be October? Cuz isn't that six months later?
So, the reason I did this is trying to have it done before Thanksgiving, because then we get to Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Years, and that's a bad time to try to get these things done.
What I was thinking about, though, is doing this in October instead.
Like September 1st?
The decision, do you mean?
September 1st, September 30th.
Because that's six months. If we're making these decisions in April during the budget cycle, October would be six months later.
The decision process.
Right.
So, and two other...well, so November 20th is AOC. So, I see that right there, is it gonna be a conflict?
So we push it up to October 12th?
Usually August and October.
As long as you guys are not interfering with...
We're not always...
12th of October.
The port day?
I have things going on on the 12th.
The port day?
No, it isn't really. I think that was retained. Save the date, goodness. Okay, we'll try to avoid the 12th.
So, no, yeah. So we can just avoid...it's just a per...just for this year, personal request that we... please avoid the week of the 12th, if we can.
So what you're proposing, Leslie, then, is changing October to September and November to October, so that we're complete by October 31st, as opposed to...
Yes, wishing I really got the month.
Yeah.
Yeah, why not?
Well, cuz I, yeah, cuz I worry a little bit about getting into November, and weather, and Thanksgiving, and, you know, maybe we could have it wrapped up before that.
Cuz I think we're...we probably will only have one court meeting in November, if we're planning on. Usually, we cancel the second one. Okay.
Cuz whatever I say goes, I'm...
Sherry's in charge, as we got this great...
Okay, and then moving on to the actual application. Pretty much the same format as the last one. The questions are worded differently, obviously, to be about projects rather than operational funds. But there's still just a program narrative, that is sort of a explain what you're proposing, and then a set of specific questions. And again, I've added to the list a question about how you're going to be sustainable with this structure that we're building, or this...I shouldn't say just a structure, but this... whatever it is, this project, the facility, the very limits, whatever. So if there's any other specific questions that you guys would like to see on there, or...
Financial statement needs to be...
Yeah, make that same financial statement. So, on that one, do you want a financial statement for project three? Is that necessary?
Project budget.
Okay, yeah, well, that makes sense, because we're not funding...we're not funding the institution, we're funding the project.
No, do we need it?
Potentially, we are. I mean, if they're gonna operate it, and they're right on the cusp of not being able to fund themselves, then I think you wanna know that.
Which one is it?
Yeah, yeah. So, I don't know that we wanna build things for people who may not be here next year.
Yeah, that's a point.
Okay.
And then just the changes for the contacts, the chargers office, and then the, the matching signatures.
I'll make all those same adjustments.
And the thirty-five percent on the back page, too. It's twenty-five right now. I think I've been at, I was okay with the grant, the application.
So what, what percentage of the matching did we go with on the operational grants?
I'd say fifteen.
Fifteen? Ten?
Fifteen.
I was gonna say, I wrote down ten.
Fifteen.
No, I wrote down ten.
I wrote down ten.
I wrote down ten.
I wrote two.
Oh, I wrote two.
I wrote two. We were trying not to totally.
We said ten, you guys said ten or fifteen, and they said which one?
Yeah.
And so, and you said.
I wrote ten percent, yeah. I wrote ten percent wrong.
Okay. So, so ten percent for that one, what is the?
Five point nine nine.
What's the matching percent on this one?
Thirty-five, thank you.
Let me just talk about that.
And then I'll add clarifying language, this is for capital investments, large infrastructure.
So in the past, when we did these cap, capital investment type loans, we also asked for business plan. Is that something that needs to be improved?
Isn't that what we're asking for with financial statements, maybe?
Maybe a business plan instead of a financial statement?
Or both?
Or both?
Usually, usually.
Both is good. I like that.
I mean, usually financial state is part of the business plans.
Okay.
I mean, it may not apply to everybody, but.
Yeah, no, I like it.
Well, if it doesn't apply, it doesn't apply.
Right.
But if it does, then it's a good thing to have.
Yeah. Right, I think that really fits into the whole, what do you do once it's built?
Right, right.
I mean, it's kind of what you're forcing other people to do, too, if they're long-term strategic.
Right.
Okay. Anything else on these?
So on the grant guide itself, I made this, just about the exact same changes, except that I took out paragraph two and paragraph three and forward on this one. Because it talks about the operation supports in the third paragraph, so I didn't think we needed that for a. Which I can always give you my chicken scratch if that's.
Yes, that would be helpful.
Okay. I think that was it. Did you guys have any, Leslie, did you have any changes in language you wanted?
I think they might have been covered in the first.
Yeah, we're making the same changes.
In the first.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you for putting this together, Sandy. This really helped us, I think, make difficult decisions in an accessible way, I thought. Okay, so is that it for this one?
Yeah, so we're done with that one and ready to move on to special projects.
Do you guys wanna tackle special projects?
Try.
Okay. We got forty, forty minutes till lunch?
Because, I mean, well, it's all fresh in our mind right now.
Yeah, sure.
I'm okay, I'm okay with that.
Because we're gonna make some decisions.
Adjustments.
I think if we can get this done today, that would be awesome.
Just, Leslie, that you promised, it's just.
Yes.
That's why I was, you see, I looked at her to say, are you sure you wanna go on?
Thank you.
But she did write one, so it's.
Somebody make sure that this woman has a meal.
So that's, yeah.
Okay.
All right. So most of what I put together here came from the old application and the existing economic enhancement fund ordinance. So that's where the most language came, and then I tried to work in, you know, the comments that I heard at the last work session.
This is.
Special projects.
Not, not operating.
Not operating and not capital.
And not capital.
Projects. Special.
So my, my question is.
Which is events.
Do we want to leave a little bit of room for capital construction or capital projects? I'm taking in the past, some of the things that have come in were like the Little League team asking for a lawnmower, stuff like that.
The rodeo association wanting to update their bleachers.
Right, so some of that stuff has come in. And so I think there's a mix and match.
I think the smaller, yeah.
Set a dollar. Yeah, that's what I've been thinking about, if there was need to be a monetary now.
A dollar.
Or at least in mind.
Okay.
Or maybe special projects is actually aligned in the whole budgetary process anyway. Just say five percent of the total or something, not to exceed. And then that way, it would adjust the amount of funds available, or inflation, or both.
In terms of the amounts that's going into the fund?
No, the amount is a cap for the capital improvement. So let's say the bleachers, we, we would fund, you know, some, something like that, not to exceed five percent of the total available funds or.
Okay.
Because that's budget, and I can tell you what, I can tell you what that is.
Five percent of budget funds or five percent of request?
I don't know, that's something to discuss. I'd say budget funds. I just threw five percent out there, just as an example.
Okay.
I don't know why you wouldn't just try to get that out of strategic investments, though. Because if you put a roof on a place, why couldn't you put bleachers in?
Right, and so that's, that's my question, is that?
Yeah, I don't know why you wouldn't, any of those cap, with capital stuff, I'd just fund a loan into one fund if you could.
So I'm trying to think, like, last year, you know, we did some updates for that senior meal site, you know, which was remodeling. Rachel, help me out, what else was more of a capital construction type?
The Lone Rock Church roof?
Church roof.
But both, both meal sites.
Both meal sites.
Yeah. I can tell you in just a second.
Is billboards capital or is that special?
So there's a good question.
It came out as the.
Yeah, and I just want to say, has been changed.
Is that a project or is that?
Right, it's a project, yeah. Or is that?
The board put that in as a marketing budget.
Capital.
In our total request, we line item marketing that included bill.
I think to me.
Small business.
To me, it's okay to leave the capital in there, with the idea that these are the smaller guys. That, you know, the capital fund, the one that we just finished, is meant to be large-scale investments. You know, somebody, somebody's deploying fiber, somebody's, you know, I mean, larger ones that we know are six figures.
So do we wanna set a dollar cap for this? That if this is coming in and you're asking for a, with project funding, that it's not gonna be more than ten grand or twenty-five grand or, or something? And if you're over that, then you go to that other cycle?
Then you go to the other cycle. That makes sense to me.
No, no.
Yeah. Because then they could apply if they're, they could apply for the, the fall one.
Right.
If they don't.
Say, okay, this, this is too much for special projects.
Have them both ready.
Come back.
And they get rejected with special, then.
Do you remember, do you remember when the Arlington Education Foundation applied? And they, it was kind of a, it was a big amount. Where would they fall in this new setup?
Um, so that's, that gets us into building reserves. That was basically building their endowment, which was kind of in contrast to what decisions had been made in past years with other entities that do that. They've always been told, no, if we give you the money, it needs to go into this year's.
Operations.
Sponsorships or scholarships.
Scholarships, okay.
As opposed to going into the endowment and building the endowment.
I was just trying to think of one that was a higher amount that was still, we still considered special projects. Well, a couple of them, though, we moved out to different areas, like the golf course and the.
Yeah, there were some, some that were in there that basically, because last year, the idea was give money to everybody. There were, some things were taken out of special projects and paid through other funds to make that work.
Yeah.
Specifically, the recreation line item.
I mean, what do we think about, I'll, I'll throw out a number to start. What about twenty-five thousand? Any, we'll fund up to twenty-five thousand, capital projects of up to twenty-five thousand need to go to.
Strategic.
The, the strategic, or whatever, what are we gonna call the strategic investment grant? Did we come up with any?
Well, I think we need to add in something like strategic infrastructure investment or strategic capital, something that makes it more clear.
That it's a capital.
Yeah.
Or capital grade program.
Yeah, I mean, the capital investment grant or something like that.
Yeah, let's do that.
Capital investment.
The SIG.
That's good.
Yeah, I like that.
It's a SIG grant, okay. So.
It was a SIG grant, strategic investment grant as well.
Yeah. All right, we're obviously getting close to lunch. So what do we think about, I threw out the twenty-five thousand. Too high, too low?
What do you think, knowing what they've usually come in around?
I, I think that's plenty high. I, I wouldn't go any higher than that for sure. Looking at some of the stuff that came in, I think most of the ones that came in last year were in the ten to fifteen thousand dollar range.
Generally, if they've been bigger, they've tried to fund them someplace else.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
So is twenty-five too high, then?
I'd say very generally.
What, what would you set it at?
I'd say like fifteen or twenty.
The other thing, too, though, they can come in, but if they're depending on their merits and how they get scored, they may not get.
And they may not go.
That's true. They might just get a portion of it.
Yeah, but I think this will help us funnel people into the right channel. So if we have a, a cap, then we know if the project is more than that, and that's an easy, for Kelly to say, nope, you're, you need to be in the.
The plan for this one. It would be nice for you to have some.
Yeah.
Well, if we was move back to this ten percent of the fund, well, to almost twenty percent, I guess, because it's split into parts in South currently, so.
But you're assuming you're only gonna have one person that asks for that? If, if you have five entities come in and ask for that five percent?
Well, no, I'm saying it's the cap, right? So the cap's, so it's ninety thousand bucks, twenty percent, if it's eighteen thousand dollars, it's your cap. I don't, I don't like, I, I really, what I'm trying to guard against is I don't like to put solid numbers in there, because that value changes every year.
So as your question, it changes.
The proportion could change every year, so twenty-five thousand, one year it'd be a quarter, and the next year it's half, or it's. I'm just trying to, trying to level it, level it out a little bit.
How much does it change from year to year?
Depends on the volume.
Yeah, because then they don't know what they're counting.
So it could be, it could be forty, it, it could be somewhere between sixty percent of what it is today to, well, not today, actually, today we're on way ahead.
And we can change it from year to year, though. I kind of like, I see what you're saying, but having a set amount is simpler for.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, you gotta recalculate every year.
The applicant process.
Add the list.
I, I, I know, so. The dollar cap is just easier.
For the applicants.
Well, could we just start, I mean, this is the first year, so what if we just did this year twenty thousand?
Okay.
And then we see if maybe it makes sense over time, if that actually just needs to be a percentage.
So I think.
But we're gonna revisit.
Oh, yeah, all of these.
Yeah, I mean, every year, we're gonna revisit what we've done, so that we can see what needs to be tweaked and what needs to be adjusted for the monies that we have. So then that's when I have to get adjusted.
That sounds like a good place to start.
Okay, so twenty K cap per project. Okay. Eligibility?
Again, this is mostly what we talked about last time. Again, we're, we're to that. Do we wanna set the minimum match number? Right now, you know, the ordinance says this funding will be used as match for other funding sources. Do we wanna say how much it is? Is a dollar enough to qualify for that?
I know, I could.
No. Did we have, did we have many groups, did we have many groups that don't have any match that you can remember? Or, or is it?
Probably not. Yeah, I think there was quite a few.
But did they not have match because we never asked for match?
Yeah.
Or did they not have match because they didn't have another way to? I mean, it's one thing if, if the expectation's always been we're just handing out free money.
Right.
Why would anybody go to the trouble of getting a match?
Exactly.
If you don't have one, why would you waste your time doing it?
But we have had ones in the past, I mean, we have had a lot of applications that do show what their match is and.
Yes, and, and we've had, you know, I, so like Lone Rock Church, if I remember correctly, we paid probably ninety-some percent of that of the total project cost.
Hard education in the Condon Schools was one hundred percent, has been a hundred percent every year. And the program just doesn't survive otherwise. I think this past year, they did have some match for the first time, that came from the five oh one that the school has, so. But it's invariably been, if not completely funded by the special projects, primarily far more than, you know, than seventy-five percent.
And we're talking, okay, so twenty thousand. If we're talking, we're talking a twenty-five percent match, I mean, we're not asking for very much money.
No, that's saying, we'll give in fifteen, you give in five.
Yeah.
Are there, Rachel?
Yeah.
Are there many others that you can think of, other than the art program, that just really didn't have any kind of match?
Yeah, I'm just looking at this from this past year. Right now, everybody had some match from the South and, yes, so this past year, everybody, no, Arlington Meal Site was completely funded.
I think the Condon Meal Site also.
Yeah, Condon Meal Site also.
So what do we do with that?
Say, next year, you do some fundraising before you come ask.
Well, they get funds from federal government, they get funds, I mean, I.
There's funds that they could show as a match.
I think it shows a match, I, I don't know, I think.
Yeah, we're not their only funding source. We're just, we just gave them a hundred percent of what they asked for.
Right.
No one that you've mentioned right now does not have external funding that's coming in.
But are they just giving for this project that we're funding? This is the question. So they, they may have a whole huge budget for other things, but I'd kick in money on this specific project.
But that's my point, is that to the folks who are worried about will these projects be funded? Well, yeah, I mean, they're, this, we're not the sole source of funding for these projects. They've chosen to have us fund them fully, because we have.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So why would they? Why would they ask for less and kick in a match if they can get the full amount from us for nothing? So I, I think we do need to have a match.
Because we're trying to.
Yeah. Less than too much.
And really, the ordinance says that, that this is meant to leverage.
It's, it's why it's made.
Yes, right.
So what, okay, what percentage do we think is appropriate for this one? Anybody wanna throw out a number?
I always aim high. Maybe you guys should start and moderate me a little bit. Well, we said thirty-five for the, for.
Right.
Is that an appropriate number for this?
And we said ten for the operating.
Right, because we're here to slowly wean those people out of their dependence, because they would maybe not exist.
Yeah, they would.
Whereas a special project is not a special project.
Right.
I think we could go somewhere in the middle.
I like twenty-five percent.
See, so twenty-five percent of it, if the twenty percent, or twenty thousand is the max, you know, you're looking at about.
Five grand. Well.
I'm starting getting hungry. What do you think?
I mean, I have no comment requesting a higher match even, so I'm, I'm, if you guys are comfortable at twenty-five, I.
I mean, it's great to administrate stuff, but it's got all these different values for everything, so I think twenty-five percent's great. I'm kind of.
Hey, that keeps us straight, that keeps you straight, though, I mean, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what, you know exactly what we're asking for.
Or should we just, should we have it in alignment with this other, so it's just a?
Get all the same.
I mean.
What?
I don't know, my concern, that is, a lot of those, a lot of those special, stuff's been awarded special projects grants in the past, is, I don't know, I think it's more in line with the, the first things we talked about than with the capital projects, we talked about strategic investment, so.
I think twenty-five.
I think a lower percentage in my mind makes a little more sense, but at the same time, as administering, I love it if they're all the same.
Yeah, but these are, tend to be the smaller organizations with less, you know, to bring into it, so I think a lower number.
Okay.
At least for now.
I mean, I'm okay with twenty, are we thinking twenty-five percent, or are we thinking lower than that?
I like a quarter.
Okay.
See, that's, you just had to say a quarter, it's like.
Nice round.
That was it.
Nice round number, so I, I would say then the twenty-five percent. You good with that?
I'm good with that.
Okay.
All right, and again, this is just the general guidelines, we already set the minimum percentage, don't worry about that. But still, same basic stuff, last funding resource and last resort, match funding required, we'll assert the right to change the amount we award, need to be claimed or expended in the fiscal year, and then, so the last one is the unclaimed funds.
I had questions on that one.
Good. So what's happened in the past is, there's two funding pools, North and South, and each funding pool is independent of the other, so what's happened in the past is if you go through, and say, the North End, you spend sixty thousand of the seventy thousand that's available. That ten thousand then becomes available throughout the rest of the year, for anybody that can come in on a first come, first served basis, if, if it's still a good project, and, and is still available throughout the rest of the year. But it can't be, you can't take the North End money and use it in the South. It's, it's split up, it's kept separate.
The other thing, too, is that if it's not, if nothing happens during the course of the years, it's, it's in addition for next year.
Then it rolls into the next year.
That's total.
Yes, so it doesn't ever get asked for or given out.
Doesn't generally happen, but it has happened.
It hasn't.
Usually, like last year, we had a return that you asked for, and then didn't ever use and give it back. But again, that, that was in the South Pool, so that went into the start on amount for the South Pool.
And explain to me what was the situation, unless I'm jumping ahead, about when they were combined? What was that scenario again? I was tired last night.
What?
When we talked about, there were one, one scenario.
So we don't fund.
Was that the monies commingled. There was a scenario, I swear.
I'm not sure.
If there are funds remaining in either pool after the final funding decision is made by the county court, those funds will be combined and made available on a first come basis.
Where are you looking?
Unclaimed funds.
Unclaimed funds.
Third paragraph.
It doesn't have a page.
Thank you.
Number.
If there are funds remaining in either pool, they will be combined, it says that. But is that, where'd that come from?
And that's new. What, that's the problem?
I was wondering about.
Because I don't.
Not sure, yeah, that's, that's a mistake, that's not the rules. They're not combined, they're kept separate.
Okay, thank you.
Here's my question, do we want to have a rolling? Because this, in essence, sets up a potential rolling application if the money's not divvied out.
Well, if, if budgetary thing, it's, it's one more thing to remember when you're doing your budget, so, I mean, it's, we can do it, we have done it, but anything we do to, you know, eliminate errors, potential, potential errors in the budget, I'm, I'm gonna be for, so.
The other thing, too, is that you can carry it over to next year, you don't have to make it available later in the year if you don't wanna continue to get requests.
Well, that's what I was wondering, is can we, if something, if we just say we don't have enough projects to send out for each, can it just, can, rather than have it be available throughout the year and having to process those, can we just move those into the next year?
So in the ordinance, it's not the same.
That's what we've done since I've been here.
Yeah, they never, they never, it was just one grant cycle, they never asked for. I don't believe.
Oh, just that one?
Yeah, just the one.
Well, but if we had something strange come in over the course of the year, did we ever take it out of that?
Not that I'm aware of.
We used a different funding source?
Yeah.
Because to me, I mean.
I don't know if there's ever been a time when all the money wasn't given out.
Well, there's been a.
Well, yeah, so other than it being given back, I don't know that, I mean, I just, I remember it's two times it's been given back, but I think otherwise it was.
It probably doesn't happen a lot.
Just speaking to the given back, I know we had a project in the past that, you know, they asked for some money and forced a specific project, and then they didn't use it all for that project, so on their own discretion, they used it to do something else for themselves. Do we have something in here that's going to eliminate that process, instead of giving back what they didn't use to?
That'll be an individual contract.
It's their heater, and you won't build a playground?
So that, that'll be built into the agreement, the agreement will say, this is the allowable use of these funds.
Okay.
And, and, you know, I, I need to go back and read, but I think there is some language in there that says.
We gave you money to fix your boiler, don't go out and put your playground.
You basically have to come back and request a, an amendment to the agreement, and the court would have to approve it.
Is that something, I, I see where you're going with that, is that something that we want to also reiterate in the, in the initial information that we provide to them? That, hey, you know, you're gonna, you need to use this for what you asked for, and not just.
I think it's, well, we say that it's. That they're gonna sign an agreement, so I wonder if that's clear or not? I don't know.
I just wonder, you know, I mean, are they gonna live with their agreement?
I don't.
Maybe they're, they go.
You hope so.
And are we holding them accountable here, too? They have a budget, are we, what's our reporting process on all of these? Where they come back and tell us what they spent their money on, and give us a final?
So we don't have one yet?
Well, we need one.
Other than, it'll, it will be in.
I wanna know where they shared their money.
Right, right now, all we've basically said is that reporting will be laid out in the agreement, but we have not said.
To be determined.
Right, we haven't said.
We need to put those agreements together.
Quarterly reports, or six-month reports, or.
So that's a part, that's another process for us, is to work on those agreements, and what the agreements are gonna say.
And it may be different, and it may be different from.
From project to entity.
Yeah.
Well, for project, project, but still.
I mean, I think what we can do is get, get the first steps out, right?
Right, right.
With the idea.
So that they can apply for them.
Yeah, with the idea, though, that in the interim, while things are coming back into us, we can set up what we wanna do with the other.
Sounds good. I just don't want to lose that piece now.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
For the record.
Okay, so, on, on the unclaimed funds, are we saying, once the cycle's over, whatever's left, just rolls into next year?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I, yeah. And anything that comes back, same thing, rolls over. We're gonna make it clean, let's make it really clean.
Yes.
Okay, the map. So in the old application, it said, if you're not sure if you're north or south, check the map. There never has been a map there, I believe. So just as an example, I drew a line through Clem.
Okay, because that's where the fog and the stars. Depending on the weather.
We're going on a line, north and north and south.
I'm not sure what you guys wanna do as far as setting this up, I mean, the passage is sort of in, oh, they got Arlington in their name, that's north. But do you want to have an actual map? Do you wanna leave it up to staff discretion to say, no, you actually belong here or there?
I hate that line, but that's.
Well, is it colored?
No, it isn't, it's, it's the division, but I guess we have a division. I don't like division.
Well, you, you can.
That's gonna make me angry again.
You can redo the, you can always redo the ordinance and combine this into one pool instead of having north, south. Yeah, you have to redo the ordinance for it.
And that could be something that we consider in.
I just, that was just, it, it's a load of attention for everybody, there's a line. But in this instance, that's the way the ordinance is written, and we have to draw a line.
So I wonder how this works out as far as population?
All about there's more in the south, and.
Yeah.
Right, but in the north, we have Arlington and Nolix, in the south, you have Condon and Little Rock.
Mayville.
Don't forget Mayville.
And the village of Mayville, and, and Clem, and Ajax, and.
And Rock Creek, and.
Plutonium.
Cecil.
Cecil. I'm kind of thinking that the, just a line is sort of arbitrary.
It is.
I'm kind of wondering.
If you're on the line, it's fuzzy.
Kind of wondering if staff can make a judgment call based on.
What community it's benefiting?
Yes. Which community it's benefiting more, because the other thing we might run into, too, is if somebody wants to do a Kenny White project, and they happen to come out of one or the other, giving some flexibility into, is it, does it benefit mostly, the project should, should be about which, which end is community, is benefiting most.
And we've had, we had one last year that was benefiting both sides, but it was, the applicant was from the North End. I don't know how, we ended up doing something different, but remember it was the ambulance thing, like CPR classes or something that the, the paramedic from Arlington wanted to do?
Yeah.
Anyway, I like your idea, that's south.
Yes, instead of drawing a line.
No mammal line.
It's a little bit staff discretion. I think I'm okay with that. It's like, it's been happening previously, correct, so.
Take map completely out of it.
And then we can, we can talk about whether you would like to remove some divisions later.
I'm trying not to say anything like.
So the, the review process is a, again, basically, I'm sorry, similar, basically the same as the strategic capital investment grants, which is, the budget committee will set the level of funding during the budget process according to the ordinance, then the applications come in, staff checks them over, sends them on to the county court for petitions. I'm moving on.
Yeah, this is good. Stop staring at them.
Okay, this, we kind of, we kind of covered at the beginning, so I don't know if there's any additional direction on this. We sort of set the twenty thousand dollar cap, or anything that's going to be, you know, considered a capital investment?
I mean, some things that are kind of missing are that capturing that whole event.
Yes.
Events, yeah.
So events and related expenses, marketing expenses. Yes.
Do we have to be specific about what it's used for, or can we just say, you can't use it for this? And then that leaves a little.
Right, I, I think we can give it some, some just general guidelines of, these are the types of things, without spelling out this is the exact five things.
Right, right.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, staff reports, so right now, the community development coordinator runs this program. Is there a change that you guys are foreseeing?
Can I jump back for a second? I know that we talked about the group, sorry, not on this one, I'm going way back. The group that was going to look over the, the grants that come before the budget, during the budget cycle, um, you know, it was a three, three-person group. Who's writing the staff report for those?
That group.
That group of three individuals.
They'll have to decide on the day to see down who's gonna put the report together.
Okay.
Obviously, it's court administrator.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I didn't know.
Pretty sure it's.
You guys want to duke it out?
Now, we'll, unless the court wants to appoint somebody, I mean, we can, I don't see why.
It'll be pretty simple, we'll collect the, every, all three's input and combine it into one report. I don't, I don't think that part will be a hangup.
No. It's more of a process.
Okay.
Okay, moving on.
Back to the present.
Okay, so the question is, how do we wanna run that process for special projects?
Well, I would say that I, I would still, I would like the applications, again, to stay centralized, so that there's one clearinghouse for everything.
I agree.
So I would say moving those to the treasurer's office, the application office.
Firstly, I think we should just handle all of them the same way.
Yeah.
What do you think of that, treasurer's office?
Makes sense to me, but.
Make it consistent.
Yes.
That's on the grounds. What do you think, Mr.?
I, I, I just, I don't know, maybe Rachel's got some.
I don't think one person should be making those decisions.
Right, so if we're talking, if we're talking about on this particular one, the three-person, the three-man person group that's going to review these, are, are they gonna be different people? Or we can have one.
Well, I, I think, first, needs to be a decision, is, is this gonna remain in the community development office, or is this going to be moved to the treasurer's office? If it's moved to the treasurer's office, then we can just do it the same way as the other ones, but we're talking about moving it from one office to another.
Is that written somewhere, or is that just what's been happening?
That's how it's been done.
And it's part of her job description, right now. That does not mean the job description can't be.
Well, and the other, so that, so what I was getting at, maybe, was that it would be, as far as the three-person entity that's gonna do this, would be the treasurer, another elected official, and then possibly the community development.
Quit the treasurer out, just be the community.
Oh.
Yeah, that's my point, is if we wanna have different people on this, or we want to stick with the same three.
But I don't know, the court admin's part of the court meeting, so it makes sense, I don't know.
I mean, for me, I.
I mean, this doesn't, you know, the, makes more sense, the other ones make more sense, they're a little more directly part of the budget process, and this one's, you know, I kind of, I don't really ever have anything to do with this. I mean, Rachel's pretty much managed the whole thing, I.
Well, that's why I wondered, we could pick different people to be on this if we wanted to.
So what if we, I, okay, what about, what about this? I, I still think applications need to go to one place. Because somebody that's coming in says, you know, I have this project, I think it helps to have one person who knows all the different projects and can, and is sort of the go-to. So what if Kelly continues to kind of be that initial touchpoint for people, but that the review itself is community development, one elected official, and the court administrator? So it's still a three-person thing, but maybe instead of, unless you wanna sit in on it, Nathan, and be elected.
Part of the issue I have with this one, some of this thing I'm involved in, so.
Yeah.
I do have a conflict, and I really have to excuse myself, so.
I'll figure out.
Sandy makes sense.
I'm just trying to.
Okay, so.
Could you name the three people again, the community development?
So community development, court administrator, and then.
Elected.
And, and elected official to be determined. And it doesn't necessarily need to be the same elected that did the grants, just somebody. Does that work for you, Rachel?
It's all good.
Okay. Thanks for asking.
All right, scoring.
Sixty percent, sounds good.
I like that one at the top, that's easy.
I made a decision. I made a decision a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, you're done.
You guys can do that.
Why don't we do the same thing that we did in the last one? Sixty, twenty-five, and then combine timeliness and necessity, you got fifteen.
Okay.
Totally.
And we are almost done, so draft timeline.
Is that kind of standard?
Yes.
Okay, does this work for everyone?
This is basically just copying last year's, not really a change, just...
Works for me.
I mean, it's different, well, aside from you, Sandy, reviewing, so...
I would, the only thing I would like to bump, if I, you know, if I have to say anything, is I think that final report ought to be due before they get their funding, if they're awarded funding next year.
So I...
And it is, I mean, it says August and such, July 31st, but that should be a stipulation, maybe.
Right, and I struggled on this one on all three, of how to do that. Because if we're saying they have the full year to use the funds, then we can't ask for a final report until after...
Right after the year.
The first of the year, so I...
So can we table the issue of final reports? Because we're going to be taking up what reports we're going to be reporting.
And the application...
And so maybe just, instead of setting a firm deadline on those, just removing from all three the final report due, and then let us kind of dive into what we want the reporting to look like in timelines. And then that way, it's just clearer for, we can talk it all, talk it all together.
Good idea.
Because it may be if we're asking for interim reports that it's less of a concern, so...
So I threw the application on here, but since we're running out of time, you guys wanted to skip this for now. And then my last slide that I wanted to hitch up on is talking about our scheduled for work sessions moving forward.
The previous slide, I mean, is it going to be any different than the...
No, I mean, the question is same format, you know, I'll make the same changes that we talked about for the strategic project grants. But otherwise, it's pretty much the same.
Okay.
I mean, I'm kind of thinking, if we want to go with a work session, so next week, Sandy, you're at CAS next week, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so Sandy's going to be gone next week, so I'm going to propose that we cancel the 27th. We're making such good progress, I feel like we're okay. And then on the 6th, which is our normal court meeting, why don't we, which really, we're already, I think, addressing staffing as we go. So I'm thinking work session number three will be on the 6th. If there's anything that comes up on special projects that we didn't quite catch, since we were kind of trying to get this done on time, we can just put that on the agenda, in case there's anything that, if you guys read through these and think, oh, I wanted to change this. So let's put that on the agenda, and then let's go do the loan programs on the 6th.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we're pretty much, we're just talking about this quite in time, the next work session is going to come on our regular scheduled meeting day.
Yeah, we're going to go ahead and cancel the 27th, because Sandy's gone in, because we've, I think we've done our work that we intended for those days.
And then we're not going to plan it farther ahead.
Because you're not available on the 13th.
Well, I was going to bring that up at the meeting, yeah, I have some news, but...
Okay.
Yeah.
So, okay.
That's good.
So for now, we just wanted to time out for this then.
Let's do the 6th, because if we are as efficient as we have been, that might be the end of it, actually, we may be done by then.
I'd just like to make a comment, you guys, this is great work that you're doing. And I just wanted to say, last year, when we went to special grants, we, we asked for money for the tent, which was going to be almost ten thousand dollars. Peter offered us the flex building from thirty days before that, so we ended up using the flex building. So I'm just giving you an example, so you may want to think about, things do change after you go to the grant thing. So you may want to have a program in there, if we need to do some changes, we have to report to the court or report to somebody.
That'll be a reporting.
Because I, we, you know, we were lost in that process, but when that building was rented, it made sense for us to use that building instead of ordering a tent that could blow away in the wind.
Right.
So it did change on us, and we did use the money in a good way, but it'd been nice if I could have come to you guys and reported what the change was.
Yeah, that'll be worked into the agreements.
Yes.
If there's any adjustments to how the money's being spent, that you would need to...
We'll have a process.
Yeah, it will be a process.
Because you don't want, I don't want the Woolery having the name after, well, they just went and blew the money somewhere else and bought beer and wine and had a good time.
Well, if you didn't invite me, then that would be bad.
Well, we did have a good time, we did invite a good one.
Okay.
But anyway, I just wanted to put that in there, and I think what you're doing here is really, really important and really good. Because it sets guidelines for all of us out there, I'm glad I came to the meeting, but it was advertised at ten and...
It wasn't advertised at ten, the newspaper on their own put it in at ten o'clock.
And that's what I go by, the newspaper.
You can always check the county website, we've got the updates.
So if there's no other, I'll go ahead and adjourn the work session, and just let folks know that the court will convene for our regular meeting at one.